We have some slight technical difficulty with the lights, hence the mood that you see right now. So we're going to give the city people a few more minutes to try and correct it before we get going. I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting for August 1st, 2024 at 7:09 PM. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Stokes?
Here.
Here. Ms. Naylor?
Here.
Ms. Julinski?
Here.
Chairman DeHaute?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, we do need to make a couple of changes. Ms. Julinski?
I'd like to amend the agenda and remove Item C under New Business for the motion to allow for site plan extension for 18030 Ton Mile Road and to move Unfinished Business for the reconsider site plan for 24340 Grashit to before the public hearing.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
And Chairman DeHaute?
Yes. So before I move into the first hearing of the public, I do wish to have it on the record that anybody that wishes to comment, they can say whatever they want. But if they are here to discuss the items, specifically the Sheetz proposal, we ask that you do not speak at this hearing of the public, that you actually speak at the public hearing, because all comments are not going to be in the record for the proposal. So please hold off on your comments. You'll all have your opportunity to speak. But if you have anything to say that does not regard to Sheetz, we ask that you take this opportunity now. So I'd like to open the first hearing of the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the first hearing of the public and we will move on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2024?
Motion to approve minutes, June 6, 2024.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, was it Ms. Naylor?
Ms. Naylor.
Thank you. Ms. Julinski, yes. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaute?
Yes. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, reconsideration of site plan for 24340 Grashit and auto sales facility. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chair DeHaute. So the applicant for 24340 Grashit Avenue is here this evening to ask for two additional waivers. So their site plan was granted conditional approval on June 6th, so two months ago before Planning Commission, and upon further review and discussion, they're requesting a waiver for an adjustment to the dimensional requirements of the maneuvering lane, so vehicle maneuvering lane on the side of the building, as well as the parallel parking spaces. And the reason for this is that those will not be parking spaces for the public at the front of the building and on the side. They will only be for the display of vehicles for sale. And so because of this, they request that the maneuvering lane be reduced from 20 feet to 18 feet. Again, still allowing for the passage of a vehicle, but not to the full extent of the 20 feet necessary when you have customer traffic flowing in and out at the same time. Additionally, they request to reduce the dimensions of the parking spaces to seven feet by 16 feet as opposed to nine feet by 20 feet. And again, this is because it will be the display of vehicles for sale and not customer parking. And so the lineup of vehicles will be a little bit different. You won't need as much space to pull in and out of. So this is the first waiver, reduction in the maneuvering and parking space dimensions because it'll be for the display of vehicles. The second waiver that's being requested is in regards to the ornamental tree planting requirement. So they, at the June meeting, were given conditional approval to have still the three deciduous tree plantings, so the street tree plantings, but then the additional requirement of the ornamental trees was agreed to be a payment in lieu of landscaping fee. However, since then, we have amended the ordinance so that we no longer require ornamental tree plantings. And again, because they are going to plant the three street trees, two on Grashit and one on the side street, then we feel as though there is validity here to request the waiver for the ornamental tree being waived rather than it being a payment in lieu of landscaping, given our amendment to the ordinance and given the context of the site. And again, we feel that the three street trees is enough to minimize the 100%. The intention of the street trees is to offset the impacts of having, you know, your urban heat island that you create with parking areas, parking lots, and 100% imperviousness, as well as to mitigate the stormwater runoff impacts. And so because they are going to provide at least some street trees, given the dimension of their site, they are requesting again the waiver of the tree plantings. So given this and the context of the site and our zoning ordinance amendment, we do recommend to conditionally approve the site plan and amend the condition of approval to now waive the maneuvering lane, parking space dimensional requirement, and the ornamental payment in lieu of landscaping. The applicant is here this evening in case you do have any additional questions.
Folks, do you have any questions?
Where's the applicant?
There.
I have a question for the fire, if I could. If we reduce that maneuvering lane...
Then I can tell you for sure.
I can pull it up.
Hi, my name is Jeff Solak. I'm the owner of the property at 24340. It's a used car lot, if everybody's familiar with that.
Sir, if you're talking to the microphone?
Yeah. And please write your name down on the piece of paper, too. Is there anybody that could... Can we get somebody to hold the thing up so we can actually see what the gentleman's brought in? Thank you.
My name is Jeff Solak. I'm the owner of that 24340 Grashit. Have you ever been here?
Yeah.
Raise the microphone.
So I brought forward a picture of the property on Grashit. This has been a used car lot since 1984. It was built in a used car lot in the city. Part of the master plan...
Ian, angle it towards the audience, please. Thank you.
So part of the master plan of the changes that are required, we did the site survey and got over the budget and my... Some of the changes that they've asked us to do seem to be quite expensive in the cost of that. One of the costs that is, well, it's been a huge car lot since 1984. It's always been in business. And one of the changes is they want us to give them the parking blocks that are, we put up a three-foot ornamental fence. I don't know why they're making us do something like that this time, part of the requirements. So one of the things I was sort of in question about...
I have all the answers of why that we have to change the look of our building for that. And I'd like to know if you can waive it at all, not to put the three-foot black ornamental fence up and take down the parking blocks. It's not really a parking lot for people to pull in and park their car. It's more of a display lot for cars. And I could see if there was an entrance on Grashit to pull in there, but the entrance is behind the lot. So I was sort of asking about a waiver on that, because it's going to be quite expensive to change that.
I don't mean to interrupt you, sir, but we're actually discussing a waiver of ornamental trees and maneuvering lane. So that really has not been brought forward.
Okay. I thought we were done speaking about that.
No. I mean, was there... Is this part of it as well? Because otherwise, I thought it was just the two items that we were going to talk about waiving.
Unfortunately, Planning Commission does not have the authority to grant a waiver for the bumper stops. This was explained to the applicant that bumper stops are no longer permitted in our zoning ordinance, and it's not at the discretion of Planning Commission. That would have to be handled through a variance, which is a different process. So this evening, tonight, we're here just to discuss what Planning Commission is able to grant a waiver about, which would be the maneuvering and maneuvering lane parking spaces and ornamental tree planting requirement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? I have no questions. Do you have a motion, Ms. Smith? Sorry.
I just still want to hear from the fire department before I can make a decision.
So due to the placement of the building and everything, him narrowing that from 20 to 18 feet is going to be not an issue, because we're still within the 150-foot range of access to be able to get to it, within the alleyway behind it, Grashit and Wilson. So it's not an issue at all.
Thank you.
My apologies. Ms. Smith, do you have a recommended motion?
Yes. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Motion to conditionally approve the site plan for a used automobile dealership at 24340 Grashit Avenue, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to discuss the comments during the Planning Commission meeting, and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated May 30th, 2024, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter are met. Further, we modify the maneuvering lane requirements from 20 feet in width to 18 feet, and the parking space dimensions from nine by 20 feet to seven by 16 feet, provided that the project meets the standards listed in Section 8.06K of the zoning ordinance. We also waive the requirement to plant two ornamental trees due to the city's updated policy, which focuses more on planting deciduous trees.
Does anybody wish to make the motion that Ms. Smith just read in?
I make the motion as just read.
We have motion?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaute?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission.
Okay, before we move into the topic that everybody is here for tonight, I just want to say that everybody deserves their right to speak, and I hope that everybody is respectful, even if people don't agree with whatever is being said by residents or applicants. And in the interest of making sure that everybody has clear thoughts, instead of me interrupting you at 30 seconds, I'm going to raise my hand. That means you have 30 seconds to go, because I don't want to break your train of thought. I want you to be able to get your thoughts out with me. I'll be interrupting you. Then, at the end of that 30 seconds, I will call time. All right? And please speak clearly into the microphone and also make sure that you write your name down. Do we need anything else besides name? Given that the... Name is fine. Okay. Very good. So can I get a motion to open the first hearing of the public? Or I'm sorry, the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
We have motion. Do we have support?
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHaute?
Yes. Ms. Smith, I believe you are going to present the project, and then the applicant will make their presentation. Then we will go into public comments after their presentation is complete.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission, so this evening, we are hosting a public hearing to hear the proposal for a special land use request at 190019 Mile. This property is currently an existing Office Depot building and parking lot. So the proposal and the request is to demolish the existing Office Depot building to be, to create a Sheetz restaurant, convenience store, and gas pumping facilities. So this property is zoned MU3, which is our regional mixed-use district. And our regional mixed-use district of all of our districts within the city is our auto-oriented, again, regional commercial district. And so retail and takeaway restaurants are permitted by right. However, gas stations are a special land use. And so therefore, this evening, we are here to consider a special land use recommendation. And from here, it would go to council to consider special land use. Part of the special land use requirement is to review a site plan, which Planning Commission intends to review this evening to make sure it aligns with the zoning ordinance. So there's a number of improvements that will have to be made to the site per our ordinance standards. Some of those entail items such as parking reconfiguration, regrading, resurfacing, landscaping, stormwater management. There's a whole, whole number of improvements that we will discuss after we, when we review the site plan after the public hearing. And so we do have the applicant here this evening to give us an overview of their proposed business as well as their proposed changes to the site. And then from there, as the chair said, we will listen to comments, and then we will get in further to the discussion about the special land use and the criteria points that are listed in the zoning ordinance that you review when you consider a special land use application. So these criterias are consistent for any special land use. We look at how it impacts the community, how it aligns with our master plan, the intention of the zoning district, and we will discuss more of those details after we hear from the public.
Good evening, members of the East Point Planning Commission and city staff. My name is David Bruckelmeier Rashitz, 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're excited to take you through some details on our site plan. But initially, since Sheetz is new to the area, I would like to take you through just a brief overview of who Sheetz is and a little bit about our culture and our stores. So if you will bear with me, we'll go through a little bit of information here. There it goes. So Sheetz was founded in 1952 in central Pennsylvania. We started as a deli carryout, really a convenience store, focusing on restaurant and carryout foods and all kinds of things like that. We had loaves of bread, and we were heavily dairy-focused. And we still hold true to a lot of those roots today. We are very heavily restaurant-focused. We'll go through a little bit of information about our restaurant. We have 30 seats inside and 14 seats outside. In addition, we have a few more outside of this particular site, just to really highlight our focus that we are very food-oriented in addition to offering convenience items and gas. We are still family-owned and family-operated, and we currently operate over 730 locations today. So there are a lot of things that make a Sheetz experience really unique. We have premium four-sided architecture. As I mentioned earlier, we have outdoor dining seats for a minimum of 14, and at this site, we have a little bit more than that. We're excited to present that. And our buildings are made out of high-quality materials. We have metal awnings, full-section brick and stone on the outside. It's a very good and articulated, modern-looking building. Again, very heavily restaurant-focused. If you look on the left side of the screen, it shows the 30 indoor seats that we have in our restaurant. We really want people to come in, sit down, and enjoy a meal, maybe shoot off a quick email if they're on the go, grab a cup of coffee, and maybe use the restroom and be on their way. Sheetz continually innovates. So you can see in the center, we have touchpad ordering systems. It's great. You walk into the store, you can order on an iPad-style menu, and the menu's incredible. I think we have like 1.1 million combinations of things you can order from our, from our restaurant. Some of our sites feature drive-throughs. You won't see that on this site plan tonight, but that is an offering that we have around our platform. Again, our kitchen is 24/7/365 full service. So if you would like a breakfast sandwich at 3:00 PM, you're more than welcome to grab a breakfast sandwich and hash browns or whatever you may have at 3:00 PM, or vice versa in the middle of the night. We have a specialty coffee bar with espresso and all kinds of... Uh, we have a specialty coffee bar with espresso and all kinds of, of really good lattes and things like that that you can order and an impressive array of premium convenience items that are all available twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. A little bit more about Sheetz. We're really community-focused. Uh, Sheetz gives back very routinely to, uh, organizations like Special Olympics in each state that we operate in. We focus very heavily on food insecurity in the United States. So we give to local food banks that are able to then distribute out to our, our communities that we service. In addition, we do things like Sheetz for the Kids. It was an organization founded by Sheetz employees, uh, that gives back to, uh, families in need at Christmas time. Each store selects sixteen families that are in need. And so seven hundred and thirty times sixteen, it's an incredible, incredible organization, and it reaches a lot of people. We're also very environmentally focused, not just with, um, fuel, but also recycling. We recycle all the boxes and plastic that come through our stores in our trash. So we sort a lot of that trash and make sure that gets split out for recycling. Uh, in addition, Sheetz is Tesla's number-one third-party vendor in the United States. We operate over a hundred Tesla charging locations, uh, which is incredible. That's more than anyone else. Uh, so we are interested in bringing Tesla into this market. Now, I can't guarantee that with tonight's site plan, but we are working with E V partners, uh, including Tesla and, and others. So we are on the forefront of that kind of technology. So I'm going to take you through a quick overview of the site. Again, Nine Mile in Beaconsfield, the northwest corner. Um, as you can see, we've got some renderings here that we're going to go through. The store is going to be, uh, six thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet. We will have eight fueling pumps that are two-sided, so sixteen fueling positions. And I'm going to take you through just a little bit of information about the site and how it looks. Uh, we have some really significant landscaping on the site that we're excited to present. Uh, we're reducing the size of the overall building on the site and increasing the green space area to over twenty-seven thousand square feet on the site to really enhance the look. We will also have things like a masonry wall along the rear, knowing that we have residents there, and we have provided, uh, landscape buffering that you'll see here in one second. So as it is today, the site is a current Office Depot. Uh, the landlord is interested in selling this property because Office Depot has signed a short-term lease, and it only has a ninety-day termination policy. So Office Depot is going to be leaving this location. As it stands, the building does need a significant amount of repair. Uh, the site floods when it rains. If you ever drive by, there's a lot of standing water out front. Um, so really, the, the parking lot's in disrepair, so this site's really in need of a really big facelift, and we're excited to present some of these improvements tonight. This is just, uh, an accurate representation of what our site's going to look like from, uh, the intersection of Nine Mile and Be- Beaconsfield. We're going to take you through a few of these renderings just to give you an idea of what you're looking at from a real visual perspective once we're complete. Uh, this is an, an accurate representation of what our site's going to look like at night. This was engineered and, and photometrically designed so that it's accurate to the eye. So this is something that our lighting designers have put together for us. This is a little further up Beaconsfield. There's residences to the east. So we went, took some pictures, and we decided to overlay what our site is going to look like to those residents from the east side. And this is really what they're going to see. We're going to maintain a lot of the existing trees and vegetation there, make some additional enhancements. And that is what it's going to look like at night. So that's something that we were really focused on. We wanted to make sure we provided that dense landscape screening on the east side, uh, just so that residents weren't being impacted by lighting at night. Again, another aerial overview of the existents, existing site, and then our current site is for the site as proposed. And another one at night. It really represents, we are making sure to keep a lot of our lighting on our own site. We are meeting all the city's ordinances for lighting at the lot line, and that doesn't even include a lot of the increased landscaping that we've provided just to really buffer our residents to the north and to the east. Again, just another quick view here, just to give you that visual representation. Is the site plan ready? We're going to take, uh, one moment. We're going to have our attorney, Pat Lennon, just quickly run through some of the special land use criteria at a high level, and then if you have any additional questions for him, and then I'll be back up to, uh, do some more site plan presentation here. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, nice to meet all of you. My first time in East Point, so it's, um, really great to be here and really proud to be part of such a, I think, um, really special project. Again, I'm Pat Lennon. I'm from the Honigman Firm. We're based in downtown Detroit. And as he said, unlike a lot of attorneys, I promise I'll be brief. So the first thing I wanted to just bring to your attention, and I'm sure Mr. Albright's familiar with it, is the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And the part of that in section one, two, five, three, five, zero, four, three, uh, applies to special land use approval applications. And it says, "A request for approval of a land use or activity uh, shall be approved if the request is in compliance with the, um, terms of the ordinance." So as I hope you've seen from our, uh, application and the supplement we submitted with it, we contend that our application complies with all the standards in your ordinance. Um, and it, and it's not just us that feels that way. We had the chance to review the staff report, and they also had the same analysis, that all of those standards are satisfied. So we hope that you'll take that to heart and you'll, uh, view it the same way. Uh, as I look at the standards, I think one of the more legal ones that sort of comes out at me is the one about the master plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, I think you heard what's envisioned for this property in this corridor in this area are these types of uses. So what you're getting is a restaurant with fueling services and with other items that you might not otherwise get if, if, if this doesn't work out. So we think it's a really good opportunity for the community to have a new use that brings back to life a property that's about to go through a transition and that also satisfies your master plan and your zoning ordinance. So at the end of the day, uh, we hope you view this application favorably. And if you have any questions of me or of us, we're more than happy to answer them. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Pat. I am going to back up here really quickly. I would like to take a couple of moments to note, uh, some of the site features that we provided here tonight. Uh, one of the big things that we've talked about with staff, and one of the things that's really called for in the city ordinance is really, and, and a lot of pedestrian accessibility to make the corner really walkable. So a couple of things we work with staff on, you can see it right here. We've provided access to Nine Mile for pedestrians safely to cross our site and come over into our sidewalk. In addition, off of Beaconsfield, we've provided two pedestrian access points, one here and one here. And in addition, we've provided some additional outdoor patio seating area so that residents can come out and enjoy, um, you know, a, a sandwich or a cup of coffee next to the really nice landscaping and a, a little knee wall that we're going to provide there. Uh, that's something that we spent some time working with staff on. In addition, we've got some bile swales on site and some things like that to meet the city ordinances from that perspective. Are there any other questions about the overall site layout that I can answer at the moment?
Now is not the time.
Okay, very good. Um, well, then just a few more closing comments here. Sheetz is a family-owned, family-operated business. We really care about the communities that we service, and we are very interested in moving in here to East Point. We provide great benefits for employees. This site will have roughly thirty to thirty-five employees, hopefully full-time, eligible for 401K, paid time off, medical, dental, vision, tuition reimbursement, and the list continues to go on. We have an incredible compensation package, even for our normal store employees. And that's not even managers. That's just any employee at our stores. Uh, so it really is a company that cares. We've been awarded accolades like "Top Companies That Care" and, uh, you know, "Top Places to Work" by Forbes. Um, that really speaks a lot to how our employees, uh, love our business. I would like to take a few moments. I know we have a little bit of our competition here tonight, and I would like to address some of the things that may come up and some of the, the questions you may have about some things that, that have been brought up and submitted to the city staff. First off, um, there was a lawsuit between EPA and, and Sheetz in two thousand and five, and it really stemmed from a paperwork issue. It was a statistical error that we were reporting, and that was something that they brought to our attention. Uh, and when it was brought to our attention, Sheetz worked in good faith with the EPA to really go through and self-audit our own sites and self-report our own sites and bring everything back into compliance. Uh, in addition, we made additional capital expenditures that exceeded all of the EPA's requirements. What I would like to tell you tonight is that, in the end, not a single gallon of fuel was found to be spilled. So we had no fuel leaks out of our tanks. It was really just a statistical error, and we were able to rectify that and work with the EPA. Second, there, there's been some comments that Sheetz is going to take all of this money, and it's going to leave Michigan. That's not true. Sheetz is going to, between land costs and, uh, capital expenditure to build our stores, spend almost a billion dollars here in the state of Michigan. Those are local dollars, local people working. That doesn't include the thirty to thirty-five employees per site. In addition, we're going to make, um, lots of donations to local charities that we routinely support, like Special Olympics. So we're using local engineering consulting firms to get our work done. So we are taking a lot of this, this money and these resources and really making a huge investment into the state of Michigan. So we are making a long-term commitment that we want you to know about. One other thing that's been brought up recently is a lawsuit that's going on between Sheetz and the E O C. As a company, there is, uh, Sheetz has no room for discrimination of any kind. Uh, we take that very seriously, and diversity and inclusion are really parts of who we are. So it's very important to our corporate culture. We do take the allegations seriously. However, we ask that you look at those in the context of our overall culture of inclusion and, uh, the accolades we've won. Top people, "Top Companies That Care", um, those are really heavily slanted into what our compo- uh, what our employees think about us. And there are anonymous surveys and things like that. So the people that work for us are very appreci- they feel appreciated and valued and respected in our workplace. You know, another thing that's come up is that Sheetz is going to kill small family businesses. That's just not the case. Uh, typically, what we see is reinvestment into businesses and things like that. Um, we rarely see any small businesses go out of, of business because we move in. And really, it's because we're different. We're combined use of fuel and restaurant. So when somebody's swinging into our site to get food, they might grab fuel, but our, our competition is still going to thrive. We do not see people go out of business, and that's something that we, we really wanted to, uh, just address with you here tonight. So just in summary, we're very excited to come here to the city of East Point and happy to answer your questions later. Thank you very much.
All right. So before we go into the dreaded three-minute section, I would like to, if we can orderly do this, I'd like to start with residents first. So if you're a resident, I would like for you to speak first, then we will go to business owners, and then we will go after that. I think it's important that we get the residents up first. So, having said that, you will have three minutes. Who wants to start us off? And please write your name on the tablet up there and speak into the microphone.
Good afternoon or good evening, rather. My name is Guilford Vaughn, and, uh, I'm, of course, a resident of East Point. I live on Norton Avenue, which is one block past Holbrook there. And my concern is that that driveway on Beaconsfield, already in the past recent years, there'd been an increased amount of traffic on Norton because Norton is the only street that goes from Beaconsfield to Kelly or vice versa. So when you turn out, make a left turn out of that driveway, you can either go down to Spindler, which people are not going to do, and go to Kelly, or you can come down my street, which people ha- are going to do. With that being said, there has been definitely an increased amount of traffic, an increased amount of debris. I've, uh, sat in my driveway, and people have just literally thrown garbage out as they turn the corner on Bea- on Norton. So that's my major concern. Why do we need to have a left turn from that driveway onto Beaconsfield when there's no other exit to Kelly other than Spindler? You got Nine Mile, you got Holbrook, you got Norton. And I'm the second house off the corner of Norton, so I'd see a lot of traffic. And I sit out in my driveway. Along with the increased traffic comes increased surveillance from undesirables. There are going to be people coming there to give sandwiches, and when they make that turn out of that driveway, and they drive through our beautiful neighborhood, and they see my lawnmower or a child's bike out there, we're more apt to have vandalism and other things happen. It's just not a good idea, I'm thinking, for that driveway to have a left turn on the Beaconsfield. Particularly at certain times of day, you can make a, a left turn onto Nine Mile. So that's going to divert traffic automatically. We're going to have increased traffic. There are kids playing on the street. In recent years, there have been families move in, thank God their families moving in instead of out, that have children. Being retired, I have a lot of time, I sit in my driveway and I watch people. As I said, I watch people throw debris out. I watch the kids playing in the street. I also watch the people turning that corner off of Beaconsfield on two wheels. And when they get to the corner, they increase their speed once they make the turn. Motorcyclists, we're talking about people sitting out having dinner at that location. There's going to be noise. There's going to be a lot of noise. There already is noise, just from the motor, the vehicle of traffic. You know, so, um, I'd rather not have that driveway there. That's my major concern. Because once they turn on the Beaconsfield, you got no place to go but Spindler or Norton. And if I had my choice, I certainly wouldn't drive down to Spindler when I knew I could make a left turn and go down to Kelly. So that's, um, my position on that. I'm, I'm all for new businesses, any new business, as long as it doesn't affect my home, um, you know, my lifestyle. Like I said, I've, I've only been here ten years, but, uh, just in that time, short time, I've seen a change in a negative way. The Home Depot, that corner, it's sometimes, on the east side where Home Depot is, sometime it's so littered with trash that it's embarrassing. And then when they do get to clean it up, it doesn't stay cleaned up long. And that trash just doesn't come from Home Depot. It doesn't all come from the gas station. And as I said, I, I've seen it happen where people just literally turn that corner and poof. You know? So I'm tasked, tasked with picking that trash up. And I myself, and I, uh, I stopped picking up after my kids a long time ago. Other people's trash, wine bottles, glass, just plain debris. Okay, so that is my position on that. Uh, that driveway is one that's going to cause a lot of problems for the residents on Beaconsfield and particularly on Norton. Thank you.
So my name is Sean Fair, and I'm on one nine zero four four Holbrook. And my house is right there. So I have some of the same, same concerns that this gentleman has, that the garbage that comes from the Office Depot area, I'm not sure where it comes from exactly, but it comes directly into my yard. Now, I do see there's a wall there, and the question is, is how far does that wall come over? But I'm out there cleaning up trash, and I, I'm at Office Depot complaining to them all the time, and I don't know if it's their trash or somebody else's trash, but I, I get that trash consistently in my yard. So it goes to my backyard, and it even goes into my front yard. So that is a concern. And Office Depot don't have a garbage can out in front. They used to have a garbage can, but I think it was even worse when they had a garbage can out, out in front. So that's, that's number one. Number two, when they demo this, the question is, will they have to come on my property when they demo this building? Because my property line is only probably six to eight feet from the back wall of the Office Depot. Will they have to come on my property to do that? That's one of my major concerns. And two, do I have to look out of my backyard? Is there going to be a wall up if this does get approved? Where I have to look at that every single day for a long period of time is my, uh, other concern. And the other, last thing is, I understand it's a restaurant, but there's a gas station on one- on one side of 94, then there's a Speedway gas station, then right at Kelly and Nine Mile, there's the mobile gas station or shale gas station, and then right past Kelly, there's another gas station, and just a little bit down from that, three or four blocks on the left side, there's another gas station, and then right at Grashit and Nine Mile, there's another gas station. So, you've got like five gas stations within a one-mile radius. Why would you put a gas station there of all things? So, that's my concern.
Is it an issue that you're unable to...
I was just looking at her side for a second. He won't even write her name.
How about this? Yeah. You mean microphone?
Oh, that's it.
While we're trying to figure out the microphone situation, is any other resident wish to hear?
My name is Aleah Lewis. I live at 19030 Holbrook. Office Depot's barrier is, my barrier to my backyard is Office Depot's wall and has been for the last 12 years that I've lived there. And I have similar concerns to Mr. Fair. I have also the concern of a 24-hour establishment being placed there and the kind of traffic and the kind of things that happen after a certain time of night. And when you take away that large wall that is in my backyard right now and you replace it with a much shorter barrier wall, and from what he showed at nighttime, it is pitch black, but you have these other areas where people can sit or they can lay around and they can park back there, and they are very close to the back of my yard, then I have serious safety and security concerns at that point. Now, if it had a regular time that it closed or there was, you know, just a normal business hour type of situation, that would be different. But anytime you open something up to being a 24-hour situation, that's what happens. And I've had some situations, even going to Speedway on the opposite side, where there have been vagrant people there certain times of night where I have not felt comfortable even getting out of my car and getting gassed at that time, and I have waited until the next morning to go and get gassed. So, now you add a much larger lot, many more, you know, parking spaces and places for someone to be at a time of night where usually overall, the intersection becomes very quiet. Usually, you know, you don't have as much movement, much surveillance around certain times of night in that area. And now, you know, you have this very short barrier for something this size. And normally, if I'm not mistaken, Sheets is a larger gas station, so it would usually occupy a larger space surrounding it. And I also have the same concern for the driveway. I don't even feel like we need a driveway. Coming out onto Beaconsfield, we have numerous openings inside of the parking lot, and then traffic, that's the other thing. Getting out onto Beaconsfield from that neighborhood is difficult there at different times of the day, and I haven't heard anyone address what's going to happen with the traffic.
I'm going to have this lady speak, sir, and then we'll move on to you. Pardon me? And if somebody could write the lady's name into the ledger, that would be...
Good evening. I'm Sharon Simpson, and I live on Beaconsfield, and I just want to know why. Why do we need another gas station there? Why do we need a 24-hour restaurant there? This is a residential neighborhood. We're not trying to entertain the city of East Point. Right now, you can't make a left turn off of Nine Mile, off of Beaconsfield into Nine Mile, and you can barely make a right. The people coming off the freeway, the people coming down Nine Mile, the people coming out that, the stores over there, it's just a little bit too much. And like the gentleman says, there's enough gas stations around that we don't need another one, and we definitely don't need a 24-hour restaurant. There's nobody in that neighborhood that's going to eat 24 hours. They should be at home. If they want to go eat 24 hours, you can go down to the White Castle. There's restaurants all up and down Nine Mile. Nine Mile is so congested now that you're right. I do go down to Norton to get to Kelly because I can't make a right off of Beaconsfield. So, I just employ, employ, employ you. Sheets, go somewhere else. Do you live in this area, in this particular, do you know how congested already is? If it did, you wouldn't try to come on the corner of Nine Mile and Beaconsfield. You can find somewhere else. Oh, yeah, 24 hours, undesirables. I've lived here a little while, and I've noticed the traffic coming down Nine Mile, pedestrian traffic. I've tried to call the police a couple of times, and I want to employ them that they come right away. Spindler Park is my backyard, and it's even getting a little bit more after dark traffic. But I want to employ the police department that they do come, but 24-hour restaurant , Nine Mile and Beaconsfield is not necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Kevin Lewis. I'm the vice president of BAPC Association, which is this building here, and we try to accommodate the whole neighborhood, but I think...
Sir, if you could speak into the microphone.
I think most people probably may have seen me. I'm picking up all the time. I'm up at 6 o'clock in the morning. And when there's a difference of traffic, our building gets blocked in. Sometime, we have to come out and find out who's blocking our driveway, because we circle around the back, we park in the back, and we have to come out, the entrance on the left side and on the east side of the building, we come in. So, we're always dealing with adversities. I just don't think it would be a good idea to add more to our problem already. It's a great, I think, great idea. I just think it's the wrong place. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Jackson. I'm a resident of Beacon 23028 Beaconsfield, and I have the same problem with having another gas station added to the three or four that we already have, and also to traffic problem. We can barely get out of Beaconsfield, the residents that live there, let alone adding gas station traffic to try to get out to make a left or right. And like the man was saying, we have no other choice. If we can't, we have to turn around and go back and go down Norton to get out of our own little community there. So, we'll be adding more traffic to get out of there, to get out of our own community if we add that gas station with a restaurant and a convenience store and a liquor store and all this other stuff. And then you got, you're going to add picnic tables, so you're going to have people sitting out all night, eating, drinking, making noise. I probably won't hear it down on my end, but the other people on this other end, they'll probably hear it. And then we'll have, like she was saying, it quiets down after a while at night, where it gets quiet in our neighborhood where we don't have all that traffic. But if you add this 24-hour thing, you're going to have people there all the time. And like, the park is in back of us, and when people start discovering, oh, it's a park back there, we can go park, get something to eat, or get something to drink, and go to the park. The park isn't supposed to be open. It closes at 10 o'clock. But we've noticed, we've started to notice that it's people back in the park after dark, because I have a dog, and she barks, and if she's barking at that fence, there's somebody back there. So, then if you call the police, they do come. They come when you call. So, we just don't need any additional traffic, any additional people walking around in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Cindy Federley, East Point resident. I'm going to start out on a positive note. I have two sons that live in Columbus, Ohio. Sorry to say that, but they love Sheets. One of them drives for work and visits many different states, and Sheets is the one stop he can make, get a good meal, and have a clean restroom to use. So, that's a positive. I think having a 24-hour gas station right off of I-94 is awesome for anybody traveling the roads, getting gas or food if they're driving at night. It's a safe place. But I have a couple of concerns. People are talking about the traffic on Beaconsfield now. If our city council members get their way and get the road diet, nobody's going to be able to get out of that gas station unless they go onto Beaconsfield. And you're going to have everybody going to the Dollar Store and Aldi's, going out their access onto Beaconsfield, because you're not going to be able to turn onto Nine Mile. I don't care if you want to go east or west. If they do the road diet at Kelly Road, which they're talking about, there will be a traffic backup that you don't even want to think about. That's my first concern. My other thought with the residents that are talking is to close off the driveway onto Beaconsfield. That would eliminate some of the traffic, or probably a good deal of the traffic coming out of there. I'm also concerned about parking when I go to the Dollar Tree there. I often park along between the Office Depot and the Dollar Tree, and that parking would be eliminated. So, that's going to make it more difficult to park for those stores. I wonder if there would be security provided overnight to calm the fears of residents. And I need to point out, there is trash all over the city. I live on Veronica, east of Grashit. I'm picking up garbage all the time, and I'm not even, I'm six houses off of Grashit. So, people throw trash out, I don't care what you live near. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other residents?
I live on Beaconsfield, on the house with the flagpole right in front. In a couple of weeks, you're going to see an orange door. My husband and I came here last month and to find that it had been canceled. We were told at that time that there would be no driveway on Beaconsfield. That was my husband's concern. This shows a driveway. Every morning when I go to work and I have to turn left onto Nine Mile to hit the expressway, I say a prayer that I do not get hit and I don't hit anyone. Sometimes it takes me three lights to turn, whether it's at 7:30, 8, 9 during the day. It's horrible. I do not want Sheets there. I think that's going to contribute to more crime. They're going to start, you're going to get the bad element up there. They're going to be starting casing out our homes. And before you know it, we're going to have a lot of break-ins. It's too easy to get to our homes, and I feel very sorry for the people on Holbrook. That's horrible what you're doing to them. There is no room. Where is their privacy? Where is their safety? I looked at what you're doing, and it looks like, oh, yeah, that's a lot of room. That's not a lot of room. Take a good look. Have Sheets gone to those people whose homes they are going to be behind and took with them and walked them through it to show this is where the wall's going to be, this is where that's going to be? Do they really know how close? And what about the people in the condos? Do they want to look at that stuff across the street? It's bad enough about the garbage. And I've seen that gentleman picking up the paper, and he's had a couple of friends, and I have stopped and thanked him. At this, we've been here over almost 25 years, and there's always garbage. No one picks up any leaves over there, so it all comes down. And the way Holbrook, I mean Norton hits, the wind blows and our house gets it all. We get all the leaves. We're constantly cleaning. My husband is always out there. So, I like Sheetz's idea, but if they could find a place somewhere else like in Grashit, they sound like a good company, but it's not for Nine Mile and Beaconsfield. Thank you.
My name is Walter Kubick. I've been here in the city 54 years, and I think this is a terrible, bad idea. Now, I live right off of Kelly, so I see what goes on at that intersection of Nine Mile and Beaconsfield. It's terrible to try and get across there. Now, you've got one gas station on this side with two exits and entrances. You have one coming from this way. You have people making right-hand turns, coming from the freeway, making right-hand turns, and then the residents who live there have got to make a left-hand turn to get to the freeway. This is nuts. You know, we've already got a city council that does not listen to us, not this much. And we don't need you guys not listening to us, too. If they want to do something here, put up a restaurant. We don't need another gas station. Why put a gas station on top of a gas station? That doesn't make any sense. And if you're going to do that, I want tier-one gas. If anybody knows anything about gas, tier-one is the best. So, please, if nothing else, just a restaurant. We don't need anything else. And close that driveway off. If it's just a restaurant, they can go out like the other stores do over here on Nine Mile. Thank you very much.
My name is Mark Higgs. I live on Holbrook. I've been over there for over 25 years. And just from listening to what's been said so far today, I've heard nothing as to the benefit of this for the residents in the neighborhood. What are the benefits for us? All we're talking about is more inconvenience, being in more jeopardy, more creating an environment or opportunity for negative elements. What is the benefit of them coming in our neighborhood and making it more difficult? Traffic? I'm not hearing any positives about them coming to this neighborhood, so it doesn't even make sense to me. There's no benefit to the community. This is just opening up our neighborhood for more issues and opportunities for the negative for Sheets. It just doesn't make sense. What we add to the neighborhood should be a benefit, and I've not heard one thing about this being a benefit to the residents.
Sir, would you write your name on the ledger?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other residents wish to be heard?
Just want to add that if you talk about the driveway not being there, the last time you guys met, I wasn't here, and all of a sudden it's there. Are there any other things that we need to know about that has changed since the last meeting? Just curious.
My name is Chris Connell. I've lived in the residency for 14 years, and thank you for having us here. Annoying, right, John? Pretty annoying. Could you imagine that in the middle of the night when you're trying to sleep? Trucks backing up, and that's just the noise pollution. That's just the noise pollution, okay? Trucks backing up, noise pollution. You've also got fumes, more fumes that we're ingesting in. I mean, we are a council member here. We're residents. You have to take care of our health. And I just think with this gas station coming up, you've got the noise pollution, you've got the light pollution, you've also got just a 24-hour place where bad things happen 24 hours. I don't know, I don't know about you guys, I don't know who's like going to the gas stations 24 hours. I don't want that near my house. Oh, and by the way... Oh, and by the way, I live right over there. See that big building right there? The other thing is, is that, okay, once you go with a gas station, you guys ever go to like Small Town America and what happens to these gas stations? You can't turn them into anything else. You can't turn them into anything else. They've got to go deep into the ground, put the fuel slots, there's danger involved in that. And like you said, we don't need another gas station right next to another gas station right there. 24 hours, kids, 24 hours, kids will be playing, unsupervised kids, grabbing their meals, grabbing their whatever. And guess where they're going to go? Right in front of my place right there and over here. Not only that, we're actually putting extra stress on those roads right there. Parking, et cetera. Also, I've been reading a lot on Sheets. There's a reason why Madison Heights and other municipalities have denied them. Much of the things I just mentioned here. So I can only say that I'm very, very much against it. Very, very much against it. I've only got about 30 seconds left. And then a couple of other things I wanted to say is that the gentleman there was talking about, we have an election coming up. So, I mean, I really hope everybody here is really listening to us because as a community, I think we've said it really loud and clear to the people who actually live here, that we do not want Sheets here. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Mary Hall Rayford, East Point resident. I see upside and downside to this particular project. And I guess the one thing I want to kind of point out to people is that I don't know of any other companies or businesses that have planned to come into East Point to do anything that would mean income to the city. I'm not saying that I support it or reject it. There are a lot of things we need to think about as far as this city is concerned. And I don't envy any of you on the Planning Commission because I know this is not your final decision. Your job, from what I understand, is to make a recommendation to council, and council can reject or accept your recommendation. I think sometimes we don't understand all the steps and the processes that go into anything. Personally, my son drives a rig, and from what I understand, all over the country, he likes Sheets. So we need to stop and think about it. I don't particularly want to go to a 24-hour restaurant because I'm usually in bed by 9:00. But other people do. So I can't make decisions based on my life only. There are different people who do different things at different hours, and I think we have to consider what's best for everyone. And I do appreciate the residents who live in the area who do not want the noise. I really do. I have noise coming down my street with some loud muffler or whatever that I'd really like to go out and throw shoes at them. So I do get that. But I think accommodations have to be made. I don't know what the company is planning to do with noise pollution and whatever, and I do understand we've got to go deep into the ground for the tanks. But I'm looking forward, hopefully, that we'll have a business in this city, and I hope that the jobs that are being discussed are going to go to residents who live here. So there are some positives as well as the negatives, and I hope that we really consider all of that. Thank you.
Do any other residents wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Pam Podlaskowski. I'm the president of Beaconsfield Babcock Co-op right across from the proposed building site. My biggest concern is security and 24-hour noise. It's a budding residential area. There are rules about noise. I think it's up until 11 o'clock. If they're allowed to stay open as a restaurant 24 hours, how are we going to keep the noise down for the neighborhood? How are we going to enforce those time limits? And the outdoor dining is the other issue. They propose to put the outdoor dining directly across from our building facing our front door. I think it should be the furthest way possible from any residence, which would be the other side of the building. I don't think it should be closer to the residences. I don't think a 24-hour restaurant, which is going to invite interesting people at all hours of the night, as everybody's been mentioning, belongs a budding residential neighborhood. Certainly, there's a place for 24-hour dining, but I think it should be in a commercial area, not in an area a budding residential area. But I mean, I guess my question is, how are you going to enforce the noise when it's a budding a neighborhood? And then, of course, there's the potential for an increase in crime because it's open 24 hours. It's replacing a business that closes at 8:00 p.m. It's entering a parking lot, a shopping center, that closes at 9:00 p.m. with the exception of a gas station that anchors the other end away from all residential. They want to put their place right next to residential, and they want to be open 24 hours, which is going to completely change what business is like in that corner right now. And then there's the actual, they're talking about how great it is to have that access to 94. But what that's going to do is bring in people from all over, not just our community, to dine indoor and out 24 hours and whatever else that encompasses noise and crime-wise. We're inviting that into our neighborhood. And I live right across the street. I am completely against it as well. They want to put it somewhere else where it's an entire business area? Great. But don't let them put it next to a residential area. There's nothing good that's going to come for the residential area out of that. Thank you.
Any other residents wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Penn's not working. I live sort of close to that neighborhood, a little north of that neighborhood. I am familiar with that neighborhood. And I actually spent some time this week walking through that neighborhood, and I did talk with some residents, a few that are here, some that are not here. And the overwhelming opinion was there were concerns about crime, traffic, noise, light, additional pollution. This is a very quiet neighborhood. It's, for the most part, a mature neighborhood. There's not a lot of parties going on there. The plaza that they're in, like we were saying, that closes down early. I think the Dollar Tree sometimes stays open till 10 o'clock. Everything else is closed by 8 o'clock. It is silent there. No disruption to the residents behind them. Right now, Office Depot, not that, if they're not going to be there anymore, but right now, the residents on Holbrook have a buffer of a 20-foot-high, 150-foot width, 235-foot depth barrier between their homes and vehicles, parking, traffic, driving. This would put a driveway all the way around the building and parking behind the building, which will not be able to be seen from Nine Mile Road. And it is a concern for residents that this is going to be in their backyard 24 hours a day, day and night. Sheets is a gas station/restaurant combination. There is no separating it. They are 24/7. There is no adjustment to their hours. Bringing in that kind of activity in the overnight hours is concerning, along with the pollution, the non-necessity of having another gas station, which is basically 70 feet away from Speedway, which is at, you know, the other end of the plaza from the BP gas station. How much benzene do we want to put into the air for these residents to breathe and have to deal with? I looked through these special land use approval standards that you have to kind of go by to see if you are approving this. And, you know, the first one, compatible with adjacent uses and improvement to the community. You know, the driving and parking around the entire building and 24/7 is not compatible. The point E, protecting health, safety, and welfare of the community, Sheets kind of gave a non-answer. They talked about the food that they sell in their restaurant. Toxic fumes, noise from patrons, cars, trucks, motorcycles, semis going around. They get their food deliveries overnight. The, you're not able to see the back parking lot from Nine Mile. It is going to put a little burden on our police force, and, thank you. I wish I had more than three minutes.
Does any other resident wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business owners.
Good evening. My name is Sharkey Hadad, and I work with the Kaldean Chamber of Commerce and the Kaldean Community Foundation. The purpose of my presentation is twofold today. One, to respond to the members of the Kaldean American Chamber of Commerce who own gas stations by coming here and shed some light about some of the facts that Sheets' representative forgot to mention. And the second one is to share with you what are the long-term consequences from allowing a gas station, and I repeat, a gas station. Whenever they do their presentation, they always start with a restaurant. It's a gas station, and the restaurant is a combination that comes after that. Their main business is gas station, not restaurants. And the purpose is to show you and explain to you and the long-term consequences of allowing Sheets' 24-hour gas station, restaurant, and a convenience store that sells alcoholic beverages. They also left that out. I would like you to ask the chief of police in this beautiful city, what is his recommendation of allowing a 24-hour gas station, restaurant, and a convenience store open 24 hours that will be selling alcoholic beverages? What are the consequences? Five, I'm going to try to do it within three minutes so the chairman would not wave his hand.
Minute and a half.
Minute and a half. Crime. The reason that I Googled crime at Sheets, 10 pages of crimes committed in Sheets' locations on the East Coast. One of them is the killing of a police officer in North Carolina. And just last week, Wednesday, there was a robbery in one of their locations in Ohio. All you have to do is Google crimes at Sheets, and you will see the 24-hour operation, what kind of bad actors they will bring. We're having a problem nationwide with mass shootings, with too many guns around. We have more guns than individuals in the United States. And now imagine a 24-hour operation where younger people have nowhere to go, are eager to gather, they don't have a place to gather, the restaurant has seats, it's open 24 hours, they gather there, and all of a sudden, something goes wrong, and now you have shootings and you have killings. Traffic, environment pollution, discrimination against black workers, and that's why they don't want to open a store in Detroit. You need to ask them, why don't they want to open a store in Detroit? They're willing to open 70 stores in the suburbs of Detroit, but none in Detroit. What do they have against Detroit? And then last vacant properties. If a bad, if a poor gas station goes out of business, guess what happens underneath that? All polluted underground. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Any other business owner wish to be heard?
Good evening, Nasr Siddiqui. From the Sheets' presentation, a couple of things that they did leave out, as Sharkey already alluded to. They did say they wanted to be a good neighbor. They forgot to mention that they have a special formulated gasoline that they sell at their locations with 88 octane. That 88 octane is roughly 20 cents cheaper than me and the local other businesses are able to provide. That will give them a very competitive advantage over our business concept. Make no mistake about it, they are a gas station company. They have 800 gas stations. They tried the concept of having a restaurant-only format, and they both shut down. I encourage everybody in this room to go and do a simple Google search, and you will see the influx of crime. A 24-hour station is a destination point. Hey, what's open late at night? Oh, let's all meet at the Sheets' gas station on Nine Mile. They're open, they got proper seating. They sell alcohol till 2:00 a.m. in the morning. Let's all meet there. Just in case you don't have internet at home and you can't do a Google search, I will just read a few of the hot points. Two men shot at Virginia gas station in possible hate crime. Suspect in deadly 2022 shooting at Sheets' gas station. Man charged with peeping at a Sheets' gas station. Man found guilty of murder in a deadly shooting at Sheets. Officer shot and killed after witnessing a crime at Sheets. Double shooting at Sheets may be a hate crime. Sheets adding security dogs to their new stations in North Carolina. Man wanted, accused of stealing alcohol at Sheets. The way the presentation was and the way that store was lit up at night, it's an easy target for crime. You can drive up to the C store, it's very dimly lit, you can go inside, do a shooting, do a robbery, and leave the premises and hop back onto the freeway. Thank you.
Any other business owner?
Good evening. Michael Awada, 17700, East Nine Mile Road. First, I do want to recognize the attorney's comments regarding what it is that it takes to get a special land use. And I also want to, you know, remind you folks here that each of you have taken an oath. And that oath is the responsibility of putting your constituents' health, safety, and welfare before anything, regardless of what the zoning ordinance may read and regardless of what you're being presented here by the petitioner. The second thing I'd like to say, which has been, I think, pretty much the comment from every resident here today, is what is the ultimate benefit to the community? The offerings that are being proposed here today are no different than what's already available. That's one. There are a number of surrounding gas stations who are locally owned and operated. We owned, we've owned that station for about 24 years now here in East Point. One of the things that we do is we refuse to sell alcohol at any of our stores, and we refuse to sell flavored vape products within 500 feet of a school. We put our communities first. It's been the founder's vision. The main thing as to why he doesn't want to sell alcohol, he stated he'll never sell a bottle of wine, beer, liquor to anybody that may get in behind the wheel because you are ultimately coming to a gas station to fuel up and then hit somebody and create a catastrophe. Second thing I'd like, the third thing I'd like to remind the planning commissioners is we've now adopted something called the Kelly Complete Streets Corridor. The purpose of that adoption is to encourage and limit the number of fatal hits that are happening within the community. As many of the people, specifically this gentleman here, mentioned, many of these people are going to be routed throughout the neighborhood where kids are playing. And as you know, while they may be 25 mile-per-hour streets, some of these people are not going to recognize that or respect that speed limit. I'd like to seriously, seriously consider denying this because of those reasons and putting the community's welfare, health, and safety... and putting the community's welfare, health, and safety before anything, um, regardless of what the economical impact can be. And while they may tout all the jobs that they're bringing, I can announce here publicly, we are paying twenty dollars an hour, and we, we need employees. We need employees. So please, come and apply. We are desperate. There is no labor. We, there's a complete shortage. We've got adds up that we spent many, many weeks of, but, uh, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Uh, I've been a, uh, business owner in the city of East Point for twenty-seven years. Um, I just wanted to get up here and, uh, talk about, um, uh, our role in the community. Uh, we are a very responsible employer. Uh, we, at the same time, uh, employ everyone from the neighborhood. Um, it is a, uh, family-owned business. Um, everyone we employ obviously works and, and lives in Michigan, so our money stays in Michigan. Everything we do, we live here, we buy homes here, our clothing is bought here, we dine out in Michigan, we don't carry any of our money outside of Michigan. Uh, I do want to mention, um, that, uh, I believe, uh, from the research I've done, we, we have, um, about fifteen gas stations currently in the city within a five-mile radius. So, uh, that's pretty much one gas station for every nineteen-hundred residents, which is a whole lot of gas stations. There is really no need for the station to come in, regardless of what they're promising of, you know, the, the brand and how people look for their brand, there's really no reason for it. There's plenty of gas stations, plenty of convenience stores, uh, in, in the existing area. And if I'm not mistaken, the city had already denied another, uh, project that was supposed to go up in East Point at Nine and Hayes, uh, from the research I've done. That site was turned down because, uh, apparently, uh, from what the article in the McCombe Daily said, uh, that the, um, stations don't really fit into the master plan, uh, of the city. So I, I really don't know how this one would fit if the other one didn't fit. And then it's come to my attention that the city had, uh, just recently, in June, uh, revised their, uh, setbacks of, uh, of, uh, going from a three-hundred-foot to a residential, uh, area, now to a hundred. I don't know if you guys can comment on that, or, or is there such a thing at all?
This is your time to speak, sir.
Okay. All right. Negative impacts. Uh, again, uh, traffic is nuts coming off of I-94 to make a right to travel west. Uh, another site, uh, of, of this caliber of six thousand square feet would just be a disaster. That means they're gonna do tons of gasoline business. And please, do not believe these guys by saying, uh, they're, they won't have an impact on small businesses. There is no such thing. They're selling exactly what we're selling. Please consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close this part of the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
We have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Before we dive into this, I want to reiterate something.
Can we take a vote first?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but before I, before we take the vote. We do not make decisions, ultimate decisions. We make recommendations. So we are gonna tear this apart, most likely, and then we're gonna submit our recommendation to city council. It is their decision, so. All right, let's have a vote.
Ms. Yulinski, yes? Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Herman DeHaan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Item A, under new business.
Yes.
I have a whole list of notes here, as I'm sure you probably do too. So why don't you start us off?
Okay, great. Well, my plan is to talk through the criteria of what a special land use is and talk about the main points in our analysis and then our recommendation as well. So the eight points in which we review a special land use, it are the following.
Can I, can I interrupt real quick? One second. The last gentleman that spoke about the change in the ordinance?
Yes.
Before, are you gonna address that?
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I'll talk about it now. I was gonna talk about it when we talked about the consistency with the zoning ordinance, but I will address that now. So that is correct. We did revise the, uh, setback from gas pumping stations from three hundred feet to one hundred feet. So, over the course of the last year and a half, we did rewrite and update the zoning ordinance, and really, we modernized a number of mechanisms and, um, criterias. And, um, we've since then had to make a number of revisions because we've realized in practice some things don't really work. So for example, we talked about earlier how we had to revise our requirement of ordnance, of ornamental trees. Um, we realized that actually, is the impact, is the requirement actually turning and providing the impact on the community that we intend for it? We realized there's greater be- benefits with deciduous. So we've moved in the direction of focusing on deciduous trees. We've done a number of other things and made revisions, and the reason that we had to revise the fo- setback requirement for gas pumping stations is because of the depth of most of our lots in the commercial districts throughout the city of East Point. So most of them, what it would have done is effectively not allowed for any new gas stations to open, and you cannot disband a certain type of business from opening in your city. So again, most of our commercial businesses are not, commercial properties are not that deep, and they are but residential, right? Nine Mile, Topher Stevens, uh, Ten Mile, Grashit, Kelly, uh, all of those commercial districts are but residential. And so we had to do another analysis and reassess the setback to still preserve public health, safety, and welfare while still allowing for that type of business use because it is granted as a, it is allowed by way of special land use. So that's the reasoning for that revision. And we are still going, we're constantly reworking and revising our zoning ordinance to make it the best that it can be.
Are we in compliance with state, the state?
Yes, we're in compliance with the state code as well, so the minimum, we are in compliance with the minimum requirement for state as well. So it's not unique to the city of East Point, is the state standard.
So we just updated something the state has been at already?
Correct.
So we were behind the, we were behind for a while?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it was too onerous. So, that's one point. And then we'll also address a number of other public comments that came up, hopefully in our discussion. So, and we do review, that's point number eight, consistent with intent of the zoning ordinance, so we just talked about that. Um, the first one is, will the proposed land use be harmonious and in accordance with the general objectives of the master plan? Um, as I stated in the summary, the master plan does designate this area as regional commercial, which we have minimized the amount of commercial properties that are envisioned as regional commercials. This area is one of those locations. Um, again, because of the context of the site, it's right off of I-94. Um, Nine Mile is a well-used roadway. Um, so this is an area that can accommodate the traffic and activities oriented around, um, auto-oriented uses. So this, it does align with the master plan. But I do want to bring up that, something else that we have in our master plan in alignment with public health and welfare, is working to prevent, uh, brownfield contamination. And as we know, gas stations do install underground storage tanks, and it was brought up in the public comment period as well. So we do recommend that, in order to prevent any contamination or a storage tank that would be left, let's say if this business ever left, we do recommend the requirement of a surety bond. And what a surety bond would do is it would, um, secure the funds needed to remove the gas pumping stations, the underground storage tank, complete a phase-one environmental site assessment, and conduct preliminary remediation if there was ever a damage and that business left. So this is something that I wish would have been the case for all of our gas stations throughout the city, but it's a new recommendation that we now, in modern times, bring forward. Um, and so, we have, we brought this up with the applicants as well, and they have agreed to it, and our city engineer recommended an amount to be able to actually address all the items that I listed. So we believe that is an important recommendation to mitigate, um, again, hazards on the community. So the second point is harmony with existing character. Uh, will it be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in harmony with the existing and intended character of the general area? Again, this is right off of I-94. It faces, um, Nine Mile, and it really works to achieve a many of the design elements that, um, not only are now requirements in the zoning ordinance, but in alignment with our master plan and what we've been working towards to make it more pedestrian-friendly and safe. And some of those being as simple as adding sidewalk connections. Um, we also really, uh, scrutinize this site plan and application because it does a but residential uses, and so we did make sure that there is adequate screen, screening and landscaping, um, and then as well, they've not only done this, the masonry wall, the six-foot masonry wall, but they also add a berman landscaping as well to help buffer. Um, they've added additional amenities that are more pedestrian-oriented, and they also really exceeded the landscaping requirements and have added, um, more interesting elements like green gardens that will also help with, uh, stormwater runoff. And then, uh, the design of the building as well is in greater alignment with the surrounding properties and with the vision of, um, Nine Mile. And then again, they've pulled not only the building, but the gas pumping stations further away from the residential on both sides. Um, so, an improvement from what is currently there. The third point is hazardous or disruptive, so will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. Um, we do recognize that as a twenty-four-hour, twenty-four-seven, uh, facility, it is a more intensive use than currently onsite, um, but we, the applicants themselves, as well as our preliminary feedback, has already made changes to account, like, to mitigate the impacts of this type of land use. Um, it's also not that uncommon to the area, because right next door is already another gas station that operates on a similar timeframe. We also recognize that this community does have people who work night shifts. That's not uncommon, and so this would be, um, really a great opportunity for made-to-order and nutritious food, which is not all that available. So, that's improvement to the community, um, which is item number four, will represent an improvement to the property. Going back to hazardous and disruptive, again, we have brought forward the surety bond. So, okay, improvement to the community, um, design of the building, landscape and screening plan, and really, a number of accommodations. They'll be adding seating to the existing bus stop, uh, and adding other pedestrian amenities, bikes racks, seating, sidewalk connections, um, which is really setting a great precedent amongst our other gas stations in the community as well. So, um, we're also... That's a good summary of item four, we can talk about that more. Item five is adequate public services and facilities, so will be served adequately by essential public services and facilities such as streets, drainage structures, sewer and water, police and fire, uh, refuge disposal, and that persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to adequately, to provide adequately for such services. Um, so again, we do believe a number of design considerations have been made, uh, to address the impact on public services and facilities. We do also recommend that planning can, planning commissioner can, planning commission, consider the replacement of sidewalks that may be, um, in current need of repair or disturbed due to the, uh, construction as well. Um, and I would like to, with the commission, at a further point, discuss the, and the applicant discuss the demolition procedure, and I think we should discuss more about the impacts and ways that we could mitigate that on the surrounding residential properties if this project were to move forward. Um, item number six is excessive or additional cost of public services. Uh, will not create excessive additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services and will not be determin, detriment to the economic welfare of the community. Um, again, this is why we brought forth the recommendation about the surety bond, to make sure that there's not additional costs that would be put onto this city and that would, it would be handled through all the funds of the business establishment. Seven is smoke, fume, glare, noise, vibration, or out, or odor, odor pollution. Will not involve uses, activities, uh, processions, materials, equipment, and conditions of operations that will be detrimental to any person or property or to the general wel- welfare by reason of excessive smoke, fumes, glare, noise, vibration, or odors. Um, again, the zoning ordinance does already take into consideration minimizing the impact of gas stations, so that is why we do have that buffer minimum requirement from residential properties, and that is unique to gas stations specifically. Um, and that, um, again, the gas pumping stations are as close to Nine Mile as possible in furthest point away from residential. Then lastly would be eight, consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, and again, this is zoned MU3, Regional Mixed Use District. So this site is unique to some other, uh, some of the other proposals for gas stations that we've received in which they were not zoned as special land use or did not align with the master plan, and for that reason, those were considered for denial. This site does, however, is planned as a regional commercial. It is a car-oriented intended use, and the site does make, um, number of considerations already to mitigate the impact on the surrounding land uses such as residential. So with that, I'd love to discuss more with the planning commission, and then too, if we have any further questions, uh, for the applicant.
Who wants to start it off?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify what I heard from the residents about the driveway. That seemed to be a big concern with them. Was it not going to be there before, and now it has been added, or was it always gonna be there?
The, we have always had a access point planned on Beacons Field. We did move it around, we had a couple of different site plan iterations that we worked with staff on, and, uh, the biggest reason we decided to align it where it is is really, it lines up with the driveway across from Speedway and eliminates some safety issues. Um, it also kept it close out to Nine Mile, so there were a couple of reasons and a couple of iterations on that access point, but in this proposal, there was always an access point, a full cut, on Beacons Field.
Okay, thank you. And then, we had a lot of concerns about the, obviously, the twenty-four-seven. Now, I, I guess I'm gonna throw in a, a little thing too, that alcohol sales can only be done in the state of Michigan till two AM, regardless if you're a twenty-four-seven establishment or convenience store. Um, you can buy at the bar till two AM. We have lots of bars, um, but for security purposes for, for the residents, are your, is your security system, what is it like in the back of your store, and what is your plan for people who want to hang out? Because we also have curfew laws as well in East Point.
Understood. If I may start with the alcohol sales.
Yes.
So Sheets is not seeking an on-premise consumption license. It will be carryout only, so we will not be allowed to have people onsite drinking any alcoholic beverages. If they are, they will need to have the police call them, that's a violation of that, of that license. So we will not be having any onsite consumption, and certainly we'll follow all of the state of Michigan's, uh, liquor laws. Um, from a security standpoint, where I'd like to start is, uh, we make a huge investment into high-quality networked cameras on all of our site, including inside of the building. So we'll have roughly sixty cameras on the site. They are very high-definition, they can catch a lot of things. In fact, we catch crime off of our site. So our cameras are so good, sometimes we can pick up license plates from, you know, another site or across the street or something like that. And our security And our security people do work with local police departments to release that footage and assist them in making arrests and finding, finding issues like that. With that said, Sheetz has employees 24/7, 365, back in Pennsylvania, monitoring all of our sites, all day, all night. Sheetz employees, so we make that huge investment. We really do care. And those employees from central Pennsylvania are able to call local police departments. They have their numbers on file. They may even have local officers' numbers on file. So we really do like to work with police departments, and we make that really big investment. The overnight hours are certainly a concern. We have a minimum of three people on staff for safety. You know, we have managers that have, you know, you know, call buttons. So in case there is an issue, they can hit the call button, and they will be contacted inside the store over a PA system. They can talk to our people back in central Pennsylvania. Those people in central Pennsylvania also monitor the exterior of our store, 24/7, 365. So if we do have people loitering, causing issues, they will call the police directly. The store doesn't even have to go outside and talk to them. So we've got a lot of those security procedures in place and ready to go. We operate over 700 of these locations, so we do know how to make them safe.
I'm going to jump in for a second. How often does it happen? How often does somebody in central Pennsylvania have to call the police department in Columbus and say that there's some nefarious-looking individual in the back of the building?
I don't know if I can honestly give you a number.
But it's accurate. I guess what I'm trying to get to is it's not smoke and mirrors, it's legit.
Oh, yeah. They hit the button, somebody is calling. Or if they see something on the cameras that's an issue, they are calling. It's, it's an active monitoring. So and if, and if someone hits that panic button, they can actually speak to someone. The store employees can actually speak up to the PA system and talk to someone from wherever they're standing, from where they're standing in the store.
I would like to ask you a question as well. With, I'm sorry. What are your safety precautions in the store on the night shift for your employees?
Certainly. So again, minimum of three employees. If any employees walking the lot at night, they're going to be wearing a safety vest, and they're going to have one of those security buttons on their person at all times that can alert our security teams to any kind of issues. So it's really a matter of a minimum level of staffing and then having that active monitoring of cameras and knowing the local police departments and having some of those call buttons at all times.
Thank you. And I ask those just, just to make sure and so the residents can have a better idea of security because I can Google BP crime, I can Google Speedway crime, and I can get all the same information that you, some people are touting just at Sheetz. So if you want to individualize one station, of course, you can find whatever information you want on that. So to say that that is a Sheetz...
Out of order.
To say that that is a Sheetz issue is a little skewed, in my opinion. So yes, there's 24-hour pros and cons, but I would like to address them for neighbors to get a better feel of everything. I personally think the tank removal thing was one of my concerns along with, you know, impact on the neighborhood. Nine Mile is very busy, and with what city council's planning is not going to make it any easier. But the problem is with people who drive, not with establishments who are there. Unfortunately, I think the traffic through the neighborhoods is because of Nine Mile construction and Nine Mile issues. I come Nine Mile every day. It's a nightmare. People turn left or right when the sign clearly tells them not to during certain times. That is an issue for any businesses that are on Nine Mile, for anyone trying to get out of neighborhoods or get onto Nine Mile. I've been in it. I've almost got hit because people won't read signs. I don't know how you prevent that. I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you for addressing those.
Absolutely.
I do a lot of over-the-road traveling, and I've had an opportunity to see Sheetz in different locations. However, they're not in a residential area. When you're traveling 65 south or 75, they're not in a residential area. So with that being said, coming into a residential area, we all have to have an open mind that there's time for change, absolutely. And we have to weigh the pros and cons of bringing something new into East Point because we all have to admit we do need something new. But with that being said, what can you say to the residents when you're doing the demolition, when you're doing these different things that you're going to make them more comfortable when it come to the noise level? When it's going to become concerning to the residents far as security is concerned? Because that is a very important thing. And will your facility have onsite security to make the neighbors feel comfortable? Because the building itself is not what attracts crime. A criminal is going to be a criminal regardless to whether the building is here or there. So that's not the issue. But what will Sheetz do to reassure the neighbors in the community that we have extra protection there, not just always relying, relying on our police department? We don't want to tax our police department to protect your facility, to bring more comfort to, to our community. So I know I put two, couple of things there in one discussion, but it's the security. What are we going to do to alleviate the noise to our neighbors? Those are two things that we should, you know?
Absolutely. I'd like to address your, your first question about, you know, do we develop sites near residential areas? And the answer is yes. I can think of two examples, like right off the top of my head, Heath, Ohio and Newark, Ohio. We have two sites where we have single-family residences, you know, right up next to our property line. And we did a lot of things like we're doing here. We added a really nice, you know, composite fence. We did some really dense landscaping. We made sure that our lights weren't shining anywhere near their property. So we made a lot, and when we've done all that here, we've done that same type of sequence of making sure we don't have lights pointed towards the residence. We've provided a very dense landscaping plan to really alleviate it and then put a mound so that that landscaping can sit on top of it and be even a little bit higher and a little bit more dense. And then also the brick wall that's going to be two-sided brick with a limestone cap. We've provided things like that in the past. So this is not, and certainly those are just two instances, but Sheetz is very able to and has before developed next to residences like this. So we are able to accomplish that. Another thing, you know, this building, we were able to do some really unique things with staff. Initially, we had some different access points, and we had a different site layout, and this one had even at one point included a drive-through. So talking about some of that mitigation, you know, we've changed our site plan. The fuel canopy is up towards Nine Mile Road, which makes the most sense. It puts that part of the site as far away from the residence as possible. So we were very cognizant of doing that. Removing the drive-through was certainly something that was concerning to staff. So we did make that pretty major concession. We took that drive-through off just knowing that it was going to be close to the residence. And instead of having a drive-through there, we put in landscaping and some more buffering. So we've done a lot of iterations like that to try to make this much more buffered from the residence. From a security standpoint, we take it extremely seriously. You know, both our employees and our customers are our top focus. So we do not want to have a site that is unsafe. With that said, we have local LIT managers. They're, they're risk management people. And, you know, if they identify a site that needs some more help, sometimes they do things in the store like locking different doors to make sure people can't come in or out a different way. You know, that kind of thing. So we are very in tune. We have people on the ground here in Michigan that will do that same thing and know these stores in and out, know the customers, and, and get a feel for it in case we need to address anything else. Does that answer your question on security, other than, you know, a lot of the things we talked about with the cameras and monitoring and things like that?
So understanding the fact that you have cameras, you say you have 60-plus cameras there. Okay, understand that. And you have someone in Pennsylvania that's monitoring that. The question I would like to know is, do you have security personnel at your location in addition to your cameras?
Sure. We do not normally employ certain security personnel. We do have a few locations where we have hired security personnel locally. That's on a case-by-case basis. That's something where, again, our LIT managers are there, and as the store opens, you know, they're going to be there, they're going to be monitoring the store, they're going to get a feel for it. And if there is an issue, they will address it that way, or whatever way they think is most appropriate in their professional opinion.
You also mentioned earlier that Sheetz know for a fact that you do, your business does not affect small businesses. What led you to that? I mean, do you have statistics? Do you have numbers to say we're opening Sheetz and there's no small business, business has been affected by your company?
Sure, something. We are, we are a little bit different from some of these other fuel station operators, even on just this corner with our large restaurant offering and things like that. So we are a little bit, bit different, and sometimes in some locations, there's no 24-hour near us, others like this one, there are. The other thing I'd like to point out is, is right on this strip of road, there are already a lot of competitors on the site, and they're all thriving and doing well. And we see that elsewhere around our platform. We do not see, you know, there's other areas just like this where there's three gas stations on a corner, all competing, and they're all being successful. And really, there's a lot of need. There's a lot of cars, we already kind of talked about that. There's a lot of people traveling these roads, and then obviously I-94, this makes a lot of sense. And so with that kind of number of people that need serviced, there's, there's always a need. So that's why we really don't see people closing down. In fact, you know, typically we make an investment like this, and our competition across the street's going to step up their game. They've already got existing customers, and they've made relationships. They're going to step up their operational game. Sometimes they stop up their, step up their benefits game or their, their compensation packages. So that kind of competition kind of sets itself into the market.
And on that note, I mean, I see competition all the time, right? You've got Home Depot and Lowe's, always side by side. You've got, you know, Detroit Wing Company, which is, you know, family-owned, and then you've got Wing Snob and Wing Stop coming in side by side. Competition's competition. I mean, everybody's got to play nice on the sandbox.
Right. Like you said, step up their game.
Unfortunately, competition is not something that is under the purview of this body. We are not here to talk about business ethics and what's right and what's wrong. We're here to make sure that a proper establishment is either placed or not placed. So it's not our job to... We're here to plan. We are, we are thinking 20 and 30 years down the road. We're not here to think about the immediate, you know, we have to worry about the immediate, but we need to look to the future. And it's, if it's creative destruction and somebody's business changes, I don't know. But we can't sit and live today and forego everything in the future. I'm off my soapbox on that, I apologize. So I'll move on to the next.
If I may, we did miss addressing one other item that you had mentioned is the demolition plan. And that's certainly a concern to the local residents. A demo, demo of that type of office-max building would probably take about a week to be completely done. So the knockdown of the building, roughly two days. And we could certainly do that between the hours of like 8:00 and 5:00 to minimize any kind of disruption to the residents. We'd certainly be willing to work with staff on addressing that concern of the local residents. And we could certainly inform them of when it's going to come in. You know, if, if we come in and we are approved of the site, our superintendent is going to know the neighbors. They're going to know them by name, they're going to have their cell phone numbers. We employ really good contractors, we have our own onsite people. Sheetz employees that will be on the site every day monitoring the construction, and they will know the neighbors' names. So we do take those steps to try to mitigate any kind of issues related to demo and construction.
That was one of the questions I had about demolition because that building structure is very, very close to property lines.
Mm-hmm.
Been in the yards, and you literally can reach through your fence and touch buildings. So that would be a critical point to assure those residents who are in those last four or five properties that their properties will be preserved.
Yes, absolutely. We will preserve our neighbors' properties, and I am very confident that we can knock that building down and not disturb their property.
And then I'm going to circle back to the driveway entrance. Whether it was there before, removed, or it's back there now, what are some other mitigation that could happen to the Beacon Field exit? And why Nine Mile couldn't be the two-cuts on Nine Mile Road? Is there a reasoning behind that? And if so, what is it for the community to understand?
Absolutely. So one of our initial iterations of the site plan did have two cuts on Nine Mile Road. Our traffic study didn't support that access, and that's one of the reasons that the Beacons Field access is critical so our customers and vehicles can't go back out to Nine Mile Road. With that said, certainly we've heard some of the residents' concerns here tonight. What we could do is work with city staff and make some different geometry that makes a left out of our site on Beacons Field very unappealing. We've done that before where we've kind of made an angle to the cut. And we've put curb in so that it's very hard to make... If somebody wants to do something crazy on the road, they're going to do it. But it can certainly discourage normal customers from taking a left out into the neighborhood. If that's something that the commission would like to recommend, we're willing to work with staff to make some alterations to the geometry.
I think that would be a great recommendation for your site plan, that forced right-hand turn. But on top of that, during certain times of the day, there's just already an established restriction on being able to turn left. So there's been a lot of conversation, the traffic coming off of 94 into your establishment. But there's a part of the day where Nine Mile is restricted from returning to the freeway area from Beacons Field. So that's why I'm also thinking, I don't know what the traffic studies rendered for you, but if it could be considered that nothing is added to the aggravation of that Beacons Field, Nine Mile interchange already. It is very hazardous because exiting off of Nine Mile and making that immediate right, that happens all the time, and now, you know, you have your traffic coming out. That could be substantial for the safety of the residents. I think that really needs some consideration. And I do love the recommendation of the forced right-hand turn. Another area that came up, the lighting that you showcased was quite dim, and I understand we have our luminous requirements for businesses, so there's not too much light. However, that is quite dark, and is there a reason why we need to loop around the entire building? Because I'm thinking if traffic can go behind the building and it's that dark, you know, that can easily be accessible to a residential neighborhood in the dark, and six-foot wall is not that big of a barrier if people have, you know, the wrong intentions. Is there any way that, just the site design, has any reason why you had to loop the entire building?
Sure, there's a couple of reasons. Fire access is one of the preliminary, or primary ones, is so that the fire truck can't completely circulate the building. That is certainly something we wanted to take into account. And regarding like lighting spilling over the site, that's something that we've tried to mitigate with, you know, the landscaping, excuse me, sorry. We can look at trying to densify some of that landscaping, but really we were, you know, shooting for evergreen trees on top of a mound to really help shield that light. All those lights are downward focused. They're all dark sky compliant, and we put shields on, especially near residential lot lines. We'll put a shield on the back so that all can only, you know, go from the perimeter of the site into the site and not backward out of the site. So we do take a lot of those things into consideration and plan them out.
And then my final point was what was raised, what's the noise? And I don't know how many, I know someone said that there are family members or truckers, et cetera. Do you kind of cater to a trucking population, that they may hear more of that? Or you have a mixed use of all kinds of businesses or patrons using your facility? What kind of disturbance should the neighbors expect?
So I do want to be clear, this site cannot accommodate over-the-road truckers. If they come into the site, they're going to have a lot of trouble trying to do anything, frankly. And we will kick them off of the site because it'll plug up traffic. It could create a, you know, a fire truck concern if a truck was parked on our site that wasn't in our delivery zone. Like, we could have issues with that, so they would be asked to leave. We certainly do not have the type of access here or the size of the site to cater to an over-the-road truck. From a noise perspective, we have, again, focused kind of that auto canopy out towards Nine Mile Road, which is, you know, well over 200, 225 feet from the lot line. So we've tried to push that as far away as we can so our deliveries are out towards Nine Mile Road. And that only puts, you know, really, who's going to be parking in the back of our building is going to be our employees. Having up to eight employees per shift, we do need some employee parks. And really, some of those rear parking spaces and some on the, what would be the west side are really where our employees are going to park. Those are still well-lit, we feel that they're still safe. We certainly don't want to go making it really bright back there to mitigate that offset from the, the residents, but we do feel that the lighting is appropriate and safe.
And then my final point was...
And then my final point was where you speak about, um, you know, our point is, you know, improvement to the community. And there were some questions raised, I know you were saying you do things with Special Olympics and things of that area. How could this set of residents, what do you propose to be some things that would make them be more welcoming to Sheets at this establishment? What would you consider some appropriate?
Sure. So some of the things that, that we provide here, our landscaping is a big focus to our site. It's really like the face of our site. Um, it's something that we take a lot of pride in. We irrigate all of our sites, so every tree, every blade of grass is going to have irrigation on it. And so that helps the site look good year round and help trees establish quickly and help our landscaping grow. We take a lot of pride in that, including our trash pickup. We do lot services once an hour, 24 hours a day, picking up trash, emptying out containers, things like that to make sure that our front landscaping still looks good and so does our site. Um, from a benefit to the community perspective, 30 to 35 positions is, is really huge. It's something with great benefits that are, and, and they're the same benefits I get at Sheets. They're very affordable, they're excellent. I can attest to that, my wife put them to the test this year. So those are two of the big things. On top of that, the investment from a physical perspective will increase the tax assessed value of the land. So we will be paying greatly increased taxes here. So that's another big benefit to the community. It improves roads, it goes to the county and the local municipality, which would be East Point to, you know, fund, fund the public good. So those are some of the really big things that, um, come in here.
Thank you for some questions I had here.
Mr. Stones? Yeah, um, you mentioned that, uh, on a case by case basis, I believe you said it was an LIT professional that would examine the store if there were issues. Can you maybe explain what would happen in a worst case scenario? Let's say the location did have, uh, people coming by, leaving trash, things weren't getting cleaned up. What exactly is the process for cleaning something like that up on a more permanent basis?
So from, from a trash perspective, our store employees and our managers will be policing the site. And hey, if we have some kind of huge issue out on site, they're out there every hour. And if there's something major from a trash perspective or anything like that, or, or somebody loitering around the site, we'll address that head on. Uh, we'll make sure that it's taken care of. From the LIT perspective, um, I don't, I'm, I'm not, uh, in a position to tell you what a worst case scenario would be. I know certainly that they take a lot of pride in our store safety and the safety of both our employees, but more importantly, even our customers. So I don't know if I can give you an exact plan because I'd be honest, I'm, I'm not an LIT professional. Uh, but we do have those people employed and they will be, uh, you know, throughout our footprint.
Are you able to answer any, uh, questions with knowledge on the surety bond that was discussed?
Absolutely.
What do you guys have, uh, in mind for that?
So we're, we're going to work with staff and get an estimate together. We'll maybe employ a third party professional to get an, uh, opinion of cost and, and write that bond and it'll have all those items listed out. Um, here's what I would like to tell you is Sheets, uh, installs and maintains the most expensive fuel system that is on the market. It is top of the line. It's dual wall tanks monitored 24/7/365 by a host of sensors. Um, we exceed the EPA's requirements on visual monitoring. Uh, so we go and physically inspect the tanks four times a year versus the minimum of one. So we take a lot of pride in, in not having any kind of contamination get into the groundwater. And if there is something, we have an in-house environmental team that will, if necessary, go and dig up the tank and replace it. If we have a problem that we can't fix, we will make that investment into the community. Uh, without question, we make that commitment. Uh, so we have no issue posting the surety bond. Um, as far as a dollar amount, um, we would want to work with staff on that and get a, a professional opinion of cost and, and we'll write that to the city.
Thank you. Well, my peers got most of my questions asked, but I want to go back to the side seating. Can it be eliminated?
Around the perimeter of the, the building or around the, um...
I don't want to, I, I would not want to see it anywhere near residents. I know it's all pretty in the green space.
Sure.
But it doesn't need to be next to the residents if, if this project were to go forward.
That was something that was worked with, uh, with staff. I would be willing to take the outdoor seating on the perimeter of the site away, uh, but I know that was one thing that staff really wanted to have to focus on pedestrian accessibility. So willing to work and maybe we can adjust the location of that. We still have the seating around the building, which we would like to keep, um, so that customers can enjoy that, those 14 outdoor seating area spaces at, at the exterior of our building. Certainly could work with staff on the outdoor seating that's on the perimeter of the site.
So I have frequented Sheets in Pennsylvania. Very, and I, and I have actually frequented the one in Beaver Falls, which abuts a very densely populated area. And I've, I see the seating and I, very rarely do I see a lot of people out there. I travel it in the winter and I travel it in the summer. Do you need that many seats?
We, we would certainly be willing to work with staff and the city to reduce the seating.
I, I guess, because my concern is, I'm hearing concerns about people hanging out. And, and I, it's, it's a, it's a problem waiting to happen because we live in the age where people do what they want and that's just the way it is. So I would, I would really like to see the outdoor seating reduced a little bit. I mean, I, I, I understand it looks pretty and everything, uh, but we have residents with concerns. Then the other thing that I have, thank you for bringing up changing the direction of that Beacons Field. That was a great idea. I would love to see signs put up that said no left turn onto Beacons Field from either business. I understand. God willing, these people have a camera system that's second to none. Maybe we can send some to the police department. I don't know, but I would love to see no turning onto Beacons Field from either establishment. Uh, and I don't know if that's something that we can talk about from the city. But obviously there's an issue there. Uh, as far as the... No, you know what? I think those are my biggest concerns. And I, and I have been to, as I said, I've been to a number of them in Pennsylvania and they're always clean. I've never seen any trouble happen, but trouble happens all over, everywhere. And to Commissioner Yulinski's point, you can Google anybody's business and find an issue. I can probably Google a church name and find something that's happened there. So criminal behavior is criminal behavior and that's why their mothers need to spank them, I guess. I don't know, but it's an issue. So what I'd like to do is we have the benefit of having a very well-heeled individual who's knowledgeable about development that we have been fortunate enough to get into our city's employment. So I would like to defer to our building official and get some feedback from him because I know that he has done a lot with developments. Mr. Myers?
Mr. Chair, there's a couple of things and I love the idea of isolating left-hand turns, uh, off of Beacons Field. Part of the other concern I have is the added traffic and the added noise by speed. There's some things that could be addressed into the, the neighborhood district without having a police officer or cage watching that could slow down that traffic or control that traffic trying to get to the N4. Those are still available options. The other thing we've done with other situations that are similar to this is we've picked that the barrier wall and this city of residents is already familiar with it being 20 some feet in the air, excuse me, 20 feet in the air. We could ask for a variance and take that wall from six feet to something a little higher. So there'd be a limited protection against those people coming, uh, over the fence at crazy hours of night, being out of control and out of behavior. So there's some things that we could do to possibly give better support to the neighborhood on the back wall. Since they're already familiar with what a, a giant wall of a building looks like to protect them, we might be able to address that as a protection sideline as well. And I would support the idea also that the outside seating that is outside the perimeter of the building could be eliminated so that the fear inside the tree issues could not be a place for overnight sleeping and loitering and that. But they have enough camera systems to do that. But those are the three major things that we've talked about, how we can protect as well as support the needs of that community. And I think those would be great additions to the issue.
And have you had experience in your prior roles with situations like this?
Yes, we've had three different times in, in two of our cities where businesses were always, always going to be open to 2 o'clock or 4 o'clock AM. And we had to figure out how to protect the neighborhoods that they were literally butted up against.
How successful were your experiences?
The last one that we did was in the last city that I was at. And, um, actually what had happened is we did some of these modifications we were just talking about as not left-hand turn into the streets of the residential. Also, we changed the elevation of walls. We also then eliminated exterior, uh, perimeter, uh, housing and seating. And we've discovered that a chamber of, I mean, a, a planning commissioner who absolutely live on one side of that street found out that they lost the traffic and they reduced the traffic of nighttime by, by collecting and correcting some of those problems. So we've got a positive feedback of those two, 2 o'clock, 2 AM morning restaurants.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicants? Ms. Smith, do you have any further feedback?
Yeah, I will say that, um, we did bring up the attention to, again, making this development be as walkable and pedestrian friendly as possible, which was the idea of the additional outdoor seating so that it's not just a budding a car, but that there is a nice little area. And because of the alignment and the intention of the Nine Mile corridor plan, but that's something that's certainly, you know, a minor element that could be tweaked and revisited. But again, the applicant has been like very aware and attentive to the intent of the master plan, our Nine Mile corridor plan, et cetera. So those were some of the elements that were added for that reason.
If I may offer one suggestion that we could look at, we do have an option to put, and you can't see it from this perspective, but we could put our outdoor seating over on the south side of the building. That way it would be facing towards Fuel Island. It would, you know, help mitigate that a little bit. And then i- if desired, we could eliminate this outdoor seating area on the east side and just install additional dense landscaping or something of that nature. And of, of course, the wall, we'd be happy to visit, looking at a, a taller wall with staff.
I think that'd be a great recommendation for the site plan. And if I, if I may, ma'am, I'm not a chair, I'm sorry, I'm just a chair. I know we have our Nine Mile, you know, redesign that we're looking at, but this is kind of the I-94 service drive. And I don't know how much pedestrian, I think it'd be really deadly if we started trying to encourage pedestrians, pedestrians at that particular location because of the proximity to the I-94 traffic. I know further into the city, you know, more westward, that might be appropriate. But I think at this, we should try and minimize increasing, you know, fatalities or just injury to pedestrians. That would be a tough street to walk because it's, I mean, I've seen the people come off of the service drive and the way they whip that turn is, is pretty deadly.
Any further comments?
That's a good question. So you had mentioned, um, the partnership with Tesla or that you're working on that and you spoke about EVs. Um, do you have charging stations?
So we cannot guarantee charging stations at this time. It's something that as an EV partner looks at our sites and decides that we're one that they want to be at. We are doing some future planning like, you know, ADA access ways, uh, making sure that we can install them without too much of a headache, conduits and things like that to pre-plan as best we can. At this point in time, I cannot guarantee that we are going to bring an EV charging partner with us. However, I will tell you that Sheets is doing R and D, uh, and we're testing out some of our own charging stations, some level two chargers that are like Sheets owned and operated. So when we are able to get that technology tested, vetted and we can purchase it, um, that's something we'll roll out as we can. Just being forward minded and wanting to be able to offer that service to our customers.
And so I had another quick question. With respect to filling the tanks, what times is that, or you know, what, what parameters of time range does that happen? I'm just thinking about the residents, like, um, who's mentioning instead of having those tanks filled at, you know, all hours of the day and night.
Certainly. So fuel deliveries are on an as needed basis. So it's really hard for me to tell you they are at this time on this day or that kind of thing like that. Uh, I will tell you that we have our own fleet, so it's our own trucks and our own truck drivers that are Sheets employees that are trained not to go, you know, creating issues with noise, you know, revving up the engine or anything like that. We take a lot of pride in operating our stores in a, you know, respectful manner. And so having our own drivers really helps us quality control that.
Thank you.
So to that point, is it possible to restrain, uh, fueling, refueling, whatever you want to call it? Maybe not to be done after 10 o'clock and not to be done before 7 o'clock in the morning? Is that something that could be done?
See, that's difficult because we are 24/7 and if we're running out of gas, you know, we do want to be able to offer that service to our customers. So there's a little bit of that, um, that we are a 24-hour business and some of these other operators probably do get deliveries overnight as well. And again, it's, you know, our loading zone is out on Nine Mile Road, you know, all, that's probably almost 300 feet from the residence. So I don't know if I can commit to restricting delivery hours. I will say that we can commit to being a respectful neighbor and being cognizant of, of residences nearby and not creating any kind of beeping noises and things like that on an unnecessary basis.
Ms. Smith, any other feedback?
Um, I know that a number of the items that we've been discussing and will continue to discuss will also be addressed in the site plan. I was just going to comment that our zoning ordinance does require, for example, with electric vehicles, that 20% of the parking spaces be EV capable. And that aligns with what the applicant was just speaking about, that in planning for the future, they would be able to easily, more easily retrofit and accommodate EV if they were ever able to accommodate that. So again, some of these items too will be addressed as we explore and get into the details of the site plan.
Okay. Do you have a motion that you wish to?
I do have a question for the commission.
Yes.
I completely agree with having a condition for right-hand turn only on to Beacons Field and working with administration to have a curb configuration preventing left-hand turns. Would you like to address that in the special land use? Typically, we would address that with the site plan.
And then Mr. Price is nodding yes. So that's what, so we do it from our side.
If I may make a point of clarification, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with the, the, the pattern of that, uh, traffic on Beacons Field. It would be a left in, right out, right in, kind of a, a right in. We'd work on some geometry. So it would be a, a three-quarter cut with no left out allowed, just to make sure we're, we've all vocalized that appropriately. Thank you.
Mr. Aubrey?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to say that there is a recommended motion, um, that's aired by the city planner. It's on page four of the report. Rather than going through each of the findings, uh, you can adopt those findings and also add any additional, uh, conditions as the planning commissioners.
Does anybody have any additional conditions they want to add besides the change in the configuration of the entrance on Beacons Field? Mr. Aubrey, how about you read it?
I'd be happy to.
There we go.
Okay, the proposed motion is as follows. A motion to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for a gas station with retail and made-to-order food services at 19001 Nine Mile Road, parcel ID number 021428353038. Based on the findings of fact and the planner's review letter dated June 28, 2024, with the following conditions. Number one, developer must commit to a surety bond to pay for, but not limited to, the following. If the project were to cease or business were to close, the removal of the underground storage tank, the completion of phase one environmental site assessment and the remediation of minimal anticipated damage. Number two, developer must commit to the replacement of sidewalk abutting the site that is either currently in need of repair or disturbed. that is either currently in need of repair or disturbed due to construction.
And then Ms. Smith, were there any other conditions that you thought were appropriate? This would be a good time to have that done.
I do not, I do not believe so because everything else will be addressed in the site plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht, does anybody wish to make that motion?
A motion that we follow the guidance recommended by the consultants and read by.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jelinski, yes. Ms. Moody? Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Moving on to the site plan review. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and there is a proposed motion also on page four of the planner's report regarding site plan consideration.
Let's make a motion to go into the special land review. Item B, do we have a motion? Do we have to have a motion to go into item B under new business?
No, you don't need a motion to go into that.
All right. So item four, page four. Ms. Smith, why don't you leave us off the site plan, please?
Thank you, Chair. So for the site plan, at this point, the commission is all familiar with the different areas that we review a site plan on. But in summary, we look at the dimensional requirements, so setbacks. We review architecture and building design, impact on public services, vehicle access and circulation, as well as maneuvering lane requirements, pedestrian access and circulation, emergency access, exterior lighting, parking and loading, screening, and landscaping. So those are all the main categories on which we review every site plan that we receive and which we review the proposed site plan for the Sheets building and pumping stations. So in summary, Sheets does meet the majority of the requirements. And there were some fine-tuning with the landscaping and landscaping screening, changing the type so that it would be appropriate shrubs year-round screening rather than just seasonal. And we did work with the applicant to ensure that their exterior lighting does indeed meet our foot candle measure requirements. And then for parking, we, the applicant does exceed the minimum requirement. They actually provide more than the ordinance requires. But again, looking at the way that they use the space, the flow of traffic, and the pumping stations, we do recommend a waiver from Planning Commission to provide the additional parking spaces that would be over the maximum parking limit. Again, that's based on evidence indicating that the maximum parking permitted will not be sufficient to accommodate the use on a typical day. Additionally, this is also where I'd like to bring up the EV parking. We do recommend, our ordinance, again, requires that 20% of the off-street parking be EV-capable spaces. And we would like to hear from the applicant more on this point to see if it can be accommodated. So this is a new provision within our ordinance that has been adopted in the time in which they initially started their proposal to when they submitted it. And then, so that's a point that I would like to discuss with the applicant. Additionally, I would like to recommend a waiver for the designated loading space in the front yard. Typically, we discourage loading spaces to be in the front yard. But again, because we want the gas pumping stations to be along Nine Mile, further away from residential areas, this is where you would need to have a reasonable loading space. So it is alignment with how they propose to use the space. So we recommend a waiver in that regard. And then for screening and landscaping, they do meet the ordinance requirement of the six-foot screening wall. This is the standard for any commercial property abutting residential. If we would like to explore a greater height, that is something that we could discuss. But again, they do have not only the masonry screening wall, but the landscaping as well. And that you will see above and will continue to grow above that six-foot screening wall. So there is additional mechanisms in place to, again, better buffer and differentiate between the commercial space and the residential. I would also like to note that the building itself is 100 feet from the rear property line. So they have moved it dramatically further away. And again, the parking and circulation will be at least 40 feet away from that property line. And as it is now, the parking lot actually abuts the rear property line. So that is something we can discuss. But again, we do, it does fulfill the ordinance requirements. We have, again, like I said, in terms of landscape screening, they do provide a three-foot wide green belt. And we've been working with the applicant to make sure that they have the appropriate plant species there. Let's see, what else? Oh, we did note that the applicant must make sure that they update to remove any prohibited species and replace the species with the approved, with those approved on the Green Macomb Tree Species List. Again, that's just accommodating our regional location and making sure that it's approved in alliance with Macomb County and that 50% of their plantings will be native. We do want to clarify that the applicant will not have a tree be closer than four feet to the property line. But again, based on our estimate, this will not be a problem. But we do request that that's clarified. And then the other waiver that is requested of the applicant is in regards to their landscape islands. So again, this is a recent revision with our parking lot landscape islands. We require two 150-foot square foot landscape islands for every 20 parking spaces. But we typically would require those to be below grade. And that's to collect as much water as it can rather than being above grade and actually repelling stormwater and heavy rains. But again, this is a gas station, and so we don't want water collecting on-site and even in the landscaped islands. So we understand the intent and support the recommended waiver so that they do not have to be below-grade landscape items. Other than that, I can get into the recommended motion and the points in which we currently include as conditions of approval. Some of them I've already mentioned. But another thing that Planning Commission should discuss is whether or not they feel as though a traffic impact study is needed. Again, this is not a requirement. It's not a requirement typical with any development in the city of East Point, but it is at the discretion of Planning Commission that if we did feel it necessary. But I will remind the Planning Commission that this is the regional commercial area. And the Nine Mile Corridor is already a high-traffic area. We know it's located right off of an interstate highway. And we, so we do not anticipate a need for this. And again, traffic considerations have already been made.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
The city council has requested a traffic study for Nine Mile for, because this is a new project area going from Tuscany Schroeder to 94. So that's already underway. So that could definitely be provided to the planners and the applicant.
I'm sorry, Ms. Holman, they're doing a traffic study from where? Tuscany and Schroeder to?
The Tuscany Schroeder area all the way to 94.
To see if they're going to reduce it?
This has to do with the Nine Mile reconstruction, so, but it is a complete traffic study. So let's not, you know, we can use the same result.
I just want to make sure it's the same. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, has police and fire, do they have any input in this project?
They meet all the criteria. It's a big company. They follow all the codes, regulations, anything set forth before them. Better than most, if not all. It would actually most likely be an asset to the community to see something of this nature to where you don't really have to worry about them doing the right thing or have to hound them to do the right thing. They fix things right away. They take care of it. There's not very much of that that goes on anymore. So that's just the fireside opinion. So PD, I can't answer for, but for us, I don't see a reason why it would not be an asset to the community.
Ms. Holman, has the police department, have they had any thoughts or have they shared any feedback with you at all?
We've not heard anything negative, Mr. Chair. We've involved everybody in the whole process, and there's not been any concerns that have been raised. Of course, this would be, you know, any, the oncoming construction on Nine Mile would definitely be coordinated to ensure that traffic flow is the best and the safest for everybody. I hope that answers your question.
Somewhat. Does anybody else have any other questions in regards to special land use? Oh, I'm sorry, site plan. I am getting tired. It's been a long day. Dagger-shooting at you, you get tired.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
One more comment, too. A lot of people don't realize this in the fire service, and I just thought of it looking at the site plan up here, the picture up on the screen. When you look at the way the whole thing goes around, that allows us access with our new ladder truck to not only Sheets, but as well to the rear of that community. I don't know if anyone's seen our new ladder truck, seen it out and about. It's pretty big. It's a pretty sizable piece of equipment. And that's just another added benefit right there, in my opinion. And I've been doing this for 23 years, so.
So you're saying it gives better access, God forbid?
It does. If we had to get to the rear of that residential area right there, that's, that's, if I was incident commander, that's most likely where I would set my ladder truck up. 100%. Just my opinion.
It's a big truck.
And with the current building that's there, it's not accessible at all.
Well, all the water's in front in the parking lot. I was going to get my water wings the other day. All right. Any other further comment on this? So the changes or the additions that I have written down that we need to incorporate into the special land use, site plan, site plan, would be the higher wall, change in the angle of the curb cuts entering from Beacons Field, removing the outdoor seating and the sidewalk on the side, on the Beacons Field side.
Okay, because you said remove outdoor seating.
Yeah, next point. Remove outdoor seating on the Beacons Field side, remove the sidewalk, move the seating from the side of the building to the front of the building, and investigate reducing the number of seats from, what did you, I think it was 14, maybe reducing it down to a smaller number? That's my thoughts. Is anybody, am I missing anything?
Do you want to remove both of those sidewalks on Beacons Field?
I'm talking about the going through.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to have a, personally, I don't think we need a sidewalk going through the establishment to Beacons Field.
I disagree.
I'm just trying to limit the amount of potential behavior, bad behaviors.
It's a sidewalk.
I don't want to make it easy on them. How about that? Make them jump the curb and make them jump the berm and go through the bushes and the trees before they want to try and do something stupid.
I think it's easier pedestrian access instead of them cutting through whatever shrubbery is there.
You're saying that one sidewalk that we're seeing close to the driveway?
The one that's kind of directly across from Speedway.
I see, close to the driveway?
Yeah, yeah. It's north of the driveway.
There's two walkways.
You see two?
There is two. There's one on either side of.
Parallel. I don't know if we need two. I see that's two.
I would remove the one closest to the Babcock Apartments, and I would leave the smaller one.
Make a walk to the front of the establishment. Anything you want to reduce at the back of the building for nighttime, you know, convenient. Keep the one next to the drivers so they're not walking in the driveway, but I don't see a second one to give them much chance to think of an exit strategy.
If I may make one comment, just because there's a neighborhood to the north and there are potentially some pedestrians that are going to come south on this, I would really like to have one pedestrian access point that is designated just so that I don't have pedestrians walking on the pavement, right, in the curb cut.
We agree.
That does make me a little bit nervous.
Yep. So eliminating, eliminating the sidewalk or the two sidewalks and taking it down to one, where would you put it? In the middle, almost?
I think it's fine where it is. Otherwise, people will cross the cars that can't turn left.
Chair, I have a quick question. The existing wall that's back there, when I looked at the site, I didn't actually like pay that much attention to it. Is it an option to leave it there? That existing wall that's already there, rather than?
See, I think it's part of the building.
It is part of the building. It's connected like to the back of it. Okay.
It's not possible.
Thank you.
So you're saying increase the size of the wall. What are you wanting to increase it to? You need a number.
That can still be negotiated out. Most people don't have the ability to jump an eight-foot wall, and they can't jump a 10-foot at all.
So that will be an administrative decision with the applicant?
Right. It'll also be a better sound barrier as well as a distraction from throwing things, missing things, or trying to climb the wall. Just to give you, why are you asking me a random question, Mr. Chair? I just went back to check. The city that I, that we were talking about has confirmed that in the last three years since the new business was opened, 26 feet away from property where they built the wall, only one time have the police been there after 11:30 at night in three years. And that particular business has now reached the perspective of the third-largest renovation, I mean, revenue stream in the county for that company in that new building location. The other thing they discovered was 58.1% of the investment came from the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other things that they want? Ms. Smith, are we ready for a motion?
Chair, I would like to finalize the, I have two pending questions before we finalize the motion. Do we, how do we, I'm sorry. In terms of the EV parking, again, our ordinance now requires that 20% of off-street parking be EV-capable. This means that they're just running and have dedicated electrical lines for ever potential hookup. Is that something that we would like to enforce in this instance? Or is it not applicable at this time and in the context of the site?
It's not something they're doing currently in the plans. They don't have a partner. What would it take for you to convert? Or do you want to, are you going to put the lines in just to have it ready? Or what are your thoughts or plans on that?
So the first thing we do, and if we have technical questions, my engineer Becky Klein with PEA Group would be more than happy to answer them. But first off, the biggest thing we do to plan out these future EV spaces to make sure we have ADA accessibility, because the grading is one of the toughest things to achieve, that ADA route. And around our entire building, it's, the sidewalk is actually fully ADA-compliant. So all these spaces are going to be EV-capable, and we will have the ability to put in the required ADA space to accommodate EV. In addition to that, we do plum conduits out of the back room of our building. In addition to that, we do plum conduits out of the back room of our building to be ready for EV. Now, the exact placement of the conduits gets a little tricky because every EV provider has a different setup. So if we went and put conduits out into the concrete and we went with a different provider, it's got to come out anyway. But we can get the big conduits out of the building, which is the biggest, you know, initial tough part and have that pre-planned. That way, when we do need to come back, our grading's not an issue. We can get the ADA spaces and then also we have the large conduits, so all we have to do is the branch conduits out to the concrete pads. So we can put conduits out of the building for the main electrical feeds.
Mrs. Smith, is that, or Mrs. Wolf, is that?
That's it. Yes, that is it. And then.
Thank you.
The last component, and again, this is minor, is that they do use face brick or they do use brick veneer as a proposed facade material rather than face brick. We require brick, face brick in the ordinance. Is this agreeable to the planning commission that they must change their brick material or are we willing to allow for brick veneer?
The brick veneer, so we do have a wood framing inside of the building, but then we do have full section brick and stone. I mean, it is a full-size brick. It's not the lick and stick. It's not the cheap stuff that's like super thin veneer. It's something like the three and five eighths inch wide brick that we would have on the face of the building. So it is a full section of masonry.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I will clarify that we are okay in this instance with allowing brick veneer. It's detailed in their site plan.
Are we saying it is regular brick and not veneer?
That's what he's.
That's the word you're saying?
That's what he's saying. The frame structure is being held up by something else. Instead of having a cutoff, they're actually having a three and a half inch brick that is actually being cemented and mortared in via brick mason.
Chair, would you like me to propose a motion?
Yes, with the proposed changes.
Okay. Motion to allow for administrative site plan approval for a gas station with retail and made-to-order food services at 19001 Nine Mile Road, parcel 021428353038. Provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting. The required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated July 3, 2024 are addressed and the required conditions in the engineer's letter dated July 1, 2024. Based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance, we grant the following waivers and include the following conditions. One, grant a waiver to exceed the maximum allowable off-street parking by 16 spaces. Two, grant a waiver to allow the loading zone in the front yard along Nine Mile by the gas station, by the gas service station. Three, waive the requirement to install a below-grade landscaped item given the location of the islands in proximity to the principal building and the addition of bioswales and rain gardens on the parameter. Four, direct exiting traffic on Beacons Field towards Nine Mile through both signage and curb configurations. Five, remove outdoor seating along Beacons Field and explore relocating additional seating to the front of the building. Six.
With a potentially lesser amount.
Yes. With the potential to reduce the overall amount of outdoor seating.
Correct.
Which brings us to six. Allow for the proposed brick, which in this case we will categorize as brick veneer. And seven, adjust the height of the screening wall beyond six feet, six feet, no more than 10 feet, to be addressed administratively.
Does anybody wish to make that motion?
I'll make the motion as stated by city planner to recommend the 19009 Mile Road. As outlined in planner's review dated July 3, 2024 and engineer's later letter dated July 1, 2024 and to include the waivers as read by the city planner.
I second.
We have motion and we have support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
Before I vote, again, I want to reiterate, if you are against the project, you have city council as your next step. There is no legal reason why we can't approve this, so I'm going to vote yes. Moving on. Two, training, item eight. Given the hour, Mr. Myers, can you employ brevity in this? Given the hour, it's almost 10 o'clock. Can you employ some brevity here?
I can.
Okay.
Mr. Chair and, and planning commission, thank you for this short, short brief conversation.
Thank you for short, short.
So I just want to introduce myself to you as a commission. As we juggle the computer system.
He promises to be brief. I got 20 bucks.
I'll take that action.
I got 20 minutes.
Why do we call him brief?
I'll just be happy not to get stabbed in the parking lot.
What they didn't tell you was my previous career path. I'm right here. So I just really want to highlight it tonight. There's so many things that we're doing. I am the new building official that was hired by the city with really, I was hired by the city with two intents, if she stops talking, then I can finish my sentence. It was one that I could bring some structure back into the city's building department and two, that we would have a creation of a legacy building department again. Legacy meaning that bringing it all back in-house, it would have a longevity of life between evolution of renters, inspectors to code enforcers that become building inspectors and building inspectors become plan reviewers, plan reviewers become deputy builders and then finally building officials. And we can have the same standards going forward. There's only two words that you think you need to know if I can figure out how this thing works. There's only two words at the bottom of the front page for the city of East Point and its consistency and predictability. So the first and most primary structure that we want to lay in front of you as our planners and in planning commission is the building department is fully aware of the need to be consistent and predictable over the long period of seven to 10, 15 years consecutive. So what we've tried to do is begin to restructure in a very intentional manner to become a building department with specialized departments. So we have a rental division now that we have isolated one rental inspector at this point, not five, and we've now isolated one of our clerks to be the number one primary target. That is, that is just targeting all of our issues. In 2021, when we had an evaluation of our building department and an audit, we failed miserably. In fact, we were under 40% of results of success and record-keeping and performance. And so what we've done is we've now changed that dimension. Number two, we're going to commercial. We've now put one of our clerks to be focusing on all of our commercial businesses and how they become derelictive. So now we're looking as a pilot for her to identify all of our vacant businesses that are still in place and if they're registered. We're also looking for all of our commercial businesses that are operating that do or do not have certificate of occupancies and are in compliance. And then number three, we'll take a look at signage throughout the entire city. We're presently taking a registry of every sign and every business and then we'll match that against our new zoning ordinance and begin to clean up all of the signs that are being violated wholly across the board. And so that, when we do that, the next category is our inspection, which is really our permits. And then we've modified our code enforcement. We do not have five anymore. We've isolated it down to three and we've divided our city into three zones. So each of our code enforcers now is only responsible for one zone of the entire city at a time. So we can begin to address some of our grass cutting in the next spring and the summer and we can now target our blight and we can target some of the other things. The other two categories that we have is our planning division as well as our plan review division that we're in the process of developing. So here's some of the real fascinating breakdowns that we are going to create, but they all derive and are driven by how do we become consistent in everything and everybody doing the same thing, no matter if we have nine people or we have two people. So we're building the structure as we design. We need to create our commissions. You're here with planning. We have a zoning that we have to restructure. We have a construction code of appeals board that we're now looking to get back on track with a full team of members. And then we can put that back into a dangerous building board and we can begin to address all these issues that have been outstanding in our city much quicker and more efficiently with citizens like yourself that have a say in what's going on in the development of our city on a long-term care. I'll leave the next picture out of the way. We do have a few plans in the future. We're rebuilding and designing our rental program in its evaluation. Right now, when we were told in 2021, we had 45,000, 4,500 registered rentals. Right now, we only have 23. So where's the other 26, 2,600? So the question is, where do we find the rest? We're going to rewrite our policies so that we can structure and meet our ordinances on hand. And so there's a number of guidelines. We're going to look at the next set of, we have to do the same thing with our commercial businesses and our commercial design. Changing our policy, by the way, for a number of years, the policy has been on an ordinance of code enforcement or a certificate of occupancy in a business. All they needed is to have the fire department and a building inspector to walk through the building and call it a day. We're going back to the old school that used to be here over nine years ago, 10 years ago, where we're going to put every trade person in it, every building and the fire department, and then sign off finally by the building official so that we have a much more stout evaluation of every business that's operating in the city. We have to do the same thing when it comes to our vacant registration. We will be presenting it to the council over the next several months, some variations that we think might help even in fee schedules, as well as how do we get our vacant registrations more proactive? Right now, we have a registration for vacant business that lasts for two years. How do we shorten that so we can get people in business?
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt John as always.
Sure, you may.
Mr. McCain has been working on a very intense vacant properties chart. And one of the things he is finding is that it's very easy for business owners to just use their businesses for storage. And so that's something that we want to address because we have buildings in the DDA, we have buildings along Nine Mile that are being used just to store supplies. And that's not what we want. So it's something that, that Mr. Myers wants to work with Mr. McCain and with the council to create an ordinance that you got to move this along. You can't do that. Thank you.
Oh, you mean like when you can see all the boxes stacked up in front of the window from Nine Mile?
Those are things we should be changing because it's in our best interest to make sure our businesses grow. And so how we can keep it predicted and keep a clean record, it'll help us. The other thing we have to do now is learn how, as a building department, is to educate the community in what we're addressing. So we're creating flyers and you'll see them coming in the next several months utilizing the planning division as well as ourselves and then putting markets on the book so we can get to the citizens much quicker. We're asking council over the next month or two to even give us permission to do our notices from our building department directly through emails so that we're not wasting time, money and energy waiting for mail to get there and back. And then we can address even the grass cutting issues as we get through the following year. So what I'll do to give you an idea, I'll make sure that the copy of these 10 fly, these 10 fly.
Slides.
Slides gets to each of you so that you can review them. But we're really here to do two things. We're trying to create a legacy system and we're trying to return the city's building department to a very strong, consistent and predictable behavior so that when the citizens, people in the community, people on commissions, they'll know exactly what we are planning to do because we repeat it successfully over and over and over, no matter what the economic, ethnic group, or no matter what the housing stock is or the business stock, we're going to perform the same results over and over and over the same.
Are you going to present this to city council or have you done this yet?
I haven't. It would be wonderful if they opened that door for me, but they haven't offered that at this point. And if they do, I'd be glad to give them the excitement of where we're at and what we think we can do to revitalize what we're really doing.
I know somebody you can hit up for an invitation.
Well, there you go. So this would be much quicker and we could throw it and break it down. But we have to build our teams really strongly. We've already begun to do that. Kim can tell you how I've already begun to do the training of all of the staff that's been here and the ones that are going to stay. We're doing that in a very committed fashion. We've already opened up international code councils training courses for those who are going to be licensed and have to be confirmed. Why should we have them here if they're not going to qualify themselves with the knowledge that they're going to the field with? So we've done the same thing with blight for our code officers. We've put a package together and they'll have to test on that to make sure they know the rules and they can see it in their eyes what that rule's been breaking. We're doing that with signs and we're going to do that, the same thing with commercial businesses. So we're really advancing the intent to let everybody have the same standard and let's reduce the paperwork and let's put it back on technology.
Have a question.
Thank you for letting me share for a minute.
Yes, thank you for sharing. So two questions. For residential code enforcement, I think a lot of times it's up to residents to kind of say something if they see it as well, to report it. Is that?
That will no longer be the case. We are intentionally building right now. That's why we divided our members into three. We put them into code, into districts that would be almost equal to one-third because we'd rather be a proactive group of people. We'd rather eliminate the phone calls and find the problem before they get to us.
Okay. How do you see someone's backyard?
Well, there's several ways. When there is a complaint or there is a concern, we have the ability to borrow a neighbor that needs to get help because they don't know what to do with the problems they're growing. Some of those aren't as difficult as we really think based on the fact that we already have the use of Google. And when it produces and they shoot a new Google map every four and a half months, we get to see what's going on. So we have the privilege to use a public medium of service, so we'll get to do those things as well. Right now, we have to even worry about some of the simple blight like people haven't painted their garages or they haven't refinished their fences and they're just about ready to collapse. And we lose property value because they're no longer water protected from weather. So how can we help? The issue we still have to wrestle with, and we're going to borrow the team that we have here at the table and as well as Ian, is we're probably short money for some of these family members who probably can't fix the roof on their house or fix it because they might be seniors that have been in fixed income now for five, 10 years already. And now the inflation of everything is overcosting the ability for them to take care of blight on their property. We need to find a way in the city and I'm more than willing to begin that process to figure out where money might be available for us to help them with so they don't have to carry the burden alone. Because our economic structure of. Because our economic structure of our residents isn't the highest, and therefore sometimes the money's not as available, and we need to find a way to help that code. If we're going to be aggressive code enforcers, then we need to be able to make sure we can help them fix what they can't afford to fix themselves.
Okay. Are you, like, if you had a list, I'm sure, of like, repeat offenders?
Once we get through that, again, part of our design is to help with our attorney's guidelines and the council's is to rewrite some of our, amend some of our ordinances so more teeth come into the building department so that we're not spending the time and energy waiting for court to catch up to our violations. So if we can take more accountability to our ordinances in our house, then we can support them more effectively going forward, being a proactive.
Again, if I may. There's a well-known pool issue, dilapidated pool issue on Raven that was addressed May, June...
It was June sixth. No, it was, it was June 10th, I think it was written.
After all the steps, the ticket was written June 10th. It is not scheduled in court until October. And that's, that's a problem. So the court is overwhelmed. We know it's a busy court, but one of the things that Mr. Myers wants to do is look at other options. He's been talking with Mr. Albright, other options where things can be resolved more quickly so that, you know, we actually have answers for the residents that call to complain. You know, what do we say to the person that, the people that call about, you know, oh, and Mr. Myers has a real issue with car auto repair and extra cars in alleys and on streets. So look forward to that.
So we have those kinds of things that are part of blight. We need to figure out why people are allowed to be required to have a used auto dealership license to sell cars, and yet multiple businesses have a car or a bike, motorbike city on their property with a for sale sign, and yet they don't have a license to sell. How do we go ahead and take care of those? We have parking lots now that we'll be addressing more aggressively, starting tomorrow morning, that have no legal rights to be parking on it, and we've given them all the... Yes, it's a gravel lot. We have so...
I was going to ask about that.
We've given them a legal, we've done our due diligence to make sure that we've given them all formal notices loudly and clearly that they no longer can do it and they must remove it. Now that we've done our part due diligently, we can now remove them on our case, and we won't wait for court. We'll just ask for a search warrant so that between us and the police department and the attorney, we'll get the paperwork, and we'll start pulling these things off of the property, and it'll stay vacated until they can get it fixed.
Oh, wow.
But that's...
I was wondering why that never came back, and I was actually going to ask about that because it was supposed to, I thought, come back last month.
And by the way, the swimming pool issue that is complaining, we've now met with the owner because he was involved, and I got tired of waiting, so I went out and we've, we've made a realization that he doesn't ever intend to use it again, but why hasn't he fixed it? So we've literally given him a scientific approach to solve it, to fill it, without having to take it all the way out of the ground, and that it would pass EPA, it would pass standards. And so he's now pulled a permit as of Tuesday that he will fix it, drill the tap, and begin it before he gets to court, and it'll be hopefully a landfill piece of property before they get to October. But that's part of the proactive way of code enforcement needs to be done. Same thing has to be done in our rental program. We need to find people that are trying to avoid that. We have an ordinance in our rental program that simply says you can't, you can't rent a property without a certificate license of the building department. That means when it expires, you shouldn't be operating. And up to this point in the city for years, they don't even start renewing it until the expiration date starts. And so your two-year program now runs into a two-and-a-half, three-year program before they get done, and we need to go back and correct that and follow our ordinances as they're written and then enforce them because we've done our due diligence. So that's what we're rebuilding in our rental program so that the city will eventually realize that we need you to comply with the rules that we have, and in doing so, everyone will understand how safe the properties and neighborhood will become.
Mr. Myers has a focus on rebuilding the neighborhoods and increasing property values. One of the other things that he's, I'm not speaking for you, am I?
Yes.
Point of sale. We have a lot of issues we found recently with point of sale that we do not require inspections before properties are sold, whether it's to an unsuspecting buyer who has no idea what they're getting into, or these LLCs that try and move properties from LLC to LLC, and there's no way for him to get in. There's some of those twenty years that we've not been able to get in and inspect because it's just rental, 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 or whatever it is. So it's something also that he and the city attorney are working on to bring to council.
We have a couple others. We've, before I got here, there is one that's been filed, and someone's aggrieved that we've misused his renovation of his building in his basement, and he wants us to pay the bill. Well, the reality is, we should have been able to see the property, what he was really doing with it at the head, and stopped it at the beginning, and if he wanted to change the design, he would have had to come back to give it a drawing. That got lost in the shuffle, and now he was trying to it. But I have now scheduled a meeting with this gentleman, and we'll show him where the state laws say he has to have these, whether he likes it or not. And that's not our mistake. That's his liability and his responsibility. So hopefully, we'll get that there before he gets back to the council or gets back to court. But those are the kind of properties. The other thing with the help of the city attorney we've taken on as more aggressive is all the residential properties, as well as some commercial, that have been sitting in our hands that haven't been addressed for a long time. So we only own a couple houses. My recommendation is we just tear it down because it's not worth anything. It's not worth us investing in. All the houses that we do own from now on, when we put it out to market to be renovated, the building department will write a complete scope of work that they will have to do as a minimum before they're allowed to go ahead and buy it and put it back on the market so that we know that it's been built or remodeled safely for the person who's really getting in there. So if we own it, we're going to build that into the equation so that nobody's guessing what has to be done. So at this point, it'll be my responsibility to rewrite all those ordinances, rewrite those scope of works for the houses that we do own, and I believe we own three or four right now that we're going to be able to put in the market once. I've now gone through them, which I have, and I am now writing all those. We're going to be really proactive to go back to our ordinances and make sure we follow them in a lieu of responsibility so a tenant, landlord, or business owner won't be able to say, "I didn't know." And now we have to communicate that to the community based on their interest and rebuild the system. It's in place. We just haven't followed it very consistently or predictably. Any other thoughts or questions?
Don't forget to add rope-lading to the businesses.
It's there. It's there. We just, I can't, I know you may not realize it, but we redesigned our signage, sign ordinance, and I can tell you probably most of the temporary signs have been up way too long with no permits at all. So once we finish getting all the registry signs of every sign in the city, we'll start targeting non, temporary signs that have filled our city with all kinds of debris without any permits or without any limitations on how long they're allowed to be there. So our enforcement agencies will now begin to clear that up for us. So our EDC and DDA can begin to make their dreams and plans come true as we're cleaning up the neighborhood.
You may be as hated as we are tonight.
Yeah. Possibly. Any other questions for me? Thank you. She extended my time just so her twenty bucks is lost on her extension.
Oh, I won.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Myers.
I love your ending slide, too.
Thank you. Well, if it was an actual slide, it's funny because it shakes and it moves, and the guy bows for you in public. It was really kind of fun.
All right. There's nobody in here. I'm not going to go through the second area of the public.
Wait.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so you're going to make me do the whole...
Yeah, so we can exit.
All right. Does anybody wish to be heard? Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none. We're closing the second hearing of the public. And moving on to commissioner comments. Mr. McCain, you're on deck. If you're going to be long, no. Hey, I got good at the stopwatch tonight after that first gentleman. I can put my stopwatch on.
Okay, just a couple reminders. We still have a few summer concerts left. August 14th, Rockin' Summer Nights at Kennedy Park, the 28th here. It is Matt Bald, the Boogie Woogie Kid. We're going to be paying homage to the 100th anniversary of the founding of the Village of Halfway. And then our last concert is September 11th. That'll be the Detroit Social Club Band. The other thing I wanted to mention, since we were talking about housing funding, there is a program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority called the My Neighborhood Program. Each of the different regions throughout the state are allocated a certain amount of money. It runs through the state's fiscal year, which, if you're not aware, restarts October 1st. And I was just pulling up, there's been, suffice it to say, a very small amount so far that's actually been utilized by Macomb County. So we were allocated a little over 1.6 million, and just a little over 200,000 of that so far has been allocated. So there is a huge opportunity for us to apply for that funding, likely with, I'm a nonprofit partner, like, you know, Habitat for Humanity or something like that that we could work with. So just wanted to throw that out there as an opportunity, but...
What's the criteria for that?
It's not that difficult.
Yeah, it's not, not too challenging. There's different things that you can apply for funding for. It just kind of depends on what you want to do, if it's new construction, repair. They even have like a placemaking section too, where you can apply for up to 75 grand for that. So, yeah. So something to consider as we're thinking about and moving in that direction.
I think 60% of his housing, he's, 20% goes to people at 60% AM line.
Yep.
That's minimal.
Yeah.
What they're giving you.
Right. So...
I'll follow with you on that, Ian. That sounds interesting. Maybe to put some of his properties back on the road.
Absolutely. No, it's a great program. I'm surprised how little, like, a lot of these regions have, like, applied and have been allocated this funding, and it'll be re-upped on October 1st, too. So we should apply now, but we can apply again in a couple months. And with that, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Mr. Myers, any comments?
I have none. Do you have any opportunity you want to talk to me? My door is always open. My phone call is always up the call.
Is that for me?
I'd be glad to discuss any subject or any plans that we have for the future.
Do you want me to make an appointment as me for you?
Ms. Smith?
It was good to see all of you this evening, and just thank you for considering all the public comment and incorporating it into the site plan and special land use.
They're still hating us.
But you did your job thoroughly, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Holman?
Thank you. I appreciate all that you guys, all of you did and the consideration that you took. I think that this applicant is serious, that it's a serious investment. We'll see what council says, but, you know, eight to 10 million dollars and bringing jobs and money and some traffic in a good way, I think it's, it would be very easy for us to work, especially with the Nine Mile reconstruction, to make sure that there's not traffic issues. The Beacons Field issue is, of course, because people are always running. I've heard from racing down to get onto 94, I've been almost hit probably seven times and just going west, or sorry, east on 94 with people coming either from Beacons Field or the gas station and stuff. But you guys were incredibly professional and very in-depth, and so, so appreciate all that you guys do and how seriously you take this position. Thank you.
Ms. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Myers, and welcome aboard. Since coming on board, Mr. Myers has been keeping me very busy. In fact, I submitted two ordinance amendments to city administration today, which are scheduled to be on next Tuesday, city council agenda for consideration. Or two weeks? Okay. Two weeks, but coming up, next, next meeting. So, but welcome, John. So that's all I have.
See what happens when you get your name on the firm letterhead?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Fushadlock?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Yulinski?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Myers. Looking forward to shaping up the city once again. I'd like to hold the business owners accountable for just even grass. I've noticed a lot of parking lots that have become grass lots instead of killing the weeds, and they're all growing up in the parking lot, and people who applied for permits to open businesses that the buildings are deteriorating because they're waiting for something else to happen. Anyway, thank you for all you do. Greatly appreciate you. And as always, Mrs. Wolf and Kim and Ian. One comment that I do have, it's very hard to fill Jeff's seat. But I think that because of our last month's meeting was a perfect example of not having a quorum, that hopefully city council or whomever is doing that appointment can get his seat filled. So we're in a better position up here. It's not at you, Margaret. I promise you and I spoke. Like I said, tough seat to fill, but we do need it filled with a qualified candidate for sure. I thank my fellow commissioners for tonight. You guys are awesome, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Stokes? I'd like to begin with a story. Thank you all. It's good to see you all.
He has a sense of humor. Yes, yes.
I was, I was looking forward to storytime. Ms. Naylor?
I think that was excellent brief training, but giving us the insight of how we can improve our building and safety department. So thank you for that. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. Enjoy the rest of the summer. We're already in August.
You're up.
I have none. Just glad to be home.
Welcome back. This was a long meeting, and I'm sorry if I seemed a little regimented making sure that the residents went first, but I was offended by receiving an email from the Caldian Chamber of Commerce only looking out for their customers, only looking out for their members. It just kind of bothered me because we have Speedway that could have been represented, which is a corporate store that nobody was. And I thank you, Ms. Yulinski, for pointing out the fact that you can Google anybody's business and find instances of violence, and in some cases, there could be more than what is proposed for this establishment. At the end of the day, I had to look at the good of the community. An eight-million-dollar investment, jobs in excess potentially of 30, going in a building that is, this, the gentleman who owns the building is obviously wanting to get rid of it because she tells, or I'm sure that Office Depot has the option to buy the building, and if they're on a short-term lease, that tells me they have no interest in staying in that building.
They're closing.
Well, yeah.
Seventeen, eighteen stores.
Yeah, so, you know, I made the reference early of creative destruction. If you're not familiar with it, it's an economic term that old technology essentially makes way for new technology. Well, this is a similar concept. I would hate to see us say no to something like this and then in five years see a big, honking, empty building that's been sitting there with 30,000 people lined up to put an event space in there. So this was a tough night, and I'm sure people are pissed, and I'm sorry for the language. I was getting the daggers. We all were, but we have to do what's best for, in the long run, and hopefully the changes will make a difference, and hopefully Mr. Myers' changes will help in policing those activities, too. So...
I'm excited because I expect to design it all the way to 2040, and when we have that kind of long-distance range and your phone to get, if that happens, this is going to be a new gateway to the city, to that corner of the city. When you talk and come off 94, a lot of new appearance from the whole city, the whole community, that kind of business on that corner.
And how many applicants have we ever had that were this concise? And how many applicants have we ever had that were this concise, this conciliatory, this willing to work with a community? I mean, it was, it was, it was impressive. So I'm done on my soapbox. Thank you, everybody. I know it was a long night. Can I get a motion to call the meeting?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion.
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski? Yes. Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?